Week day, this is a Wednesday workshop for the Flagler County Board of County Commissioners. Normally, we hold them on Wednesdays, but we've been juggling some illnesses. Good to see Commissioner Richardson with us. We are still absent Commissioner Pennington, but we hope to have her on Monday for our regular meeting. All right, so this is, we'll go ahead and call today's meeting to order. The Flagler County Board of County Commissioners Workshop, it's Wednesday, May 28, 2025. It is 1:01 PM. If everybody could stand for the pledge to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time in the agenda, we take a brief moment of silence. We take this moment to reflect and give thanks, especially for our men and women in the armed forces and the military, our first responders who keep us safe and protect us at home and abroad. And especially as we have just completed our Memorial Day holiday and where we spent time here at the GSB to give thanks for those men and women who gave the ultimate sacrifice of their lives for our country. Again, want to welcome everybody. We've got a busy workshop agenda. We're going to review the Industrial Development Authority and also review the applicants that have applied for the board for the authority. We're going to have a discussion on our county attorney applicants. We're going to also go through beach funding and budget discussions and complete this with a review of our comprehensive plan. It's a lot to go over, so we're going to try and keep everything as concise as we can. And again, thank everybody for being here. We'll do, try to do individual public comments. We don't have a huge crowd. I think we can take public comment after each of the items in order to keep things moving. All right, with that, we'll start off with the Industrial Development Authority review. Ms. Lukasik will start us off.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. My name's Amy Lukasik, Tourism Development Director. The purpose of today's presentation is to refresh your memory and perhaps provide some new education to our two newest commissioners on a recent initiative that we were tasked with back in November, which is the creation of an Industrial Development Authority Board. I'm ready for the PowerPoint. I'm going to get a clicker. Okay, so with our current strategic plan for the county under the Economic Vitality pillar, we were tasked with Objective 2.2, which is to research, develop, and implement options for economic development incentive programs. And although I'm giving the presentation, I must give credit to Dolores Key, who's our Economic Development Manager, who's done countless hours and hours of research on incentive programs to get us here. So, thank you for that. So about a year ago, we presented a handful of incentive options, and one of the options we were tasked to move forward with is the creation of an Industrial Development Authority. These can be created, they are allowed, under a specific Florida statute, 159, and they're created for the purpose of financing and refinancing projects to foster economic development in a county. And over to the right there, the authority is created by a resolution. The board members are comprised of five. Then the board members work on a bylaws, which are then adopted by the county commission, and a bond counsel is selected.
Amy, is it five is the limit?
It has to be a minimum of five.
Minimum of five.
Yeah. No less than five, the statute says. So here's some of our neighboring counties that have industrial development authorities. We used a lot of these for our research. Dolores had reached out to her colleagues, kind of to get some pointers and tips and tricks on how they go about their industrial development authority. And I will say, even though Flagler County will presumably have an IDA, all of our municipalities in the county are eligible to utilize this option. Industrial Development Revenue Bonds, so this is what the IDA would be issuing. They help finance business and industrial expansion for firms with strong credit. They can provide low-interest rate loans for large projects by permitting the borrower to take advantage of long-term financing with lower-than-prime interest rates. Industrial Development Bonds are always still approved by the county commission, with principal and interest paid solely by the company receiving the funding. An application, financing, and attorney fees are usually assessed and are outlined in the adopting resolution that we present to the county commission. So here's some advantages to a company to receive an IDRB. Typically, the interests are not subject to federal income tax and certain state and local taxes. Lower interest cost is passed on to the borrower and generally expressed as an interest differential available to the company through financing as opposed to conventional financing. And the interest is usually between 2% and 3%. And on your right-hand side are some examples of allowable costs to the company that they can use the financing for. So some examples of allowable projects, even though the name can be deceiving, that it's only for industrial development, but also can be used for a wide range of projects and facilities. Anything from a corporate headquarters to a warehouse, tourism facilities, convention centers, parking facilities, trade show, airport and port facilities, educational facilities, any type of commercial projects in designated enterprise zones, solid waste facilities, correctional and detention centers, water and wastewater, and public restaurants and lodging facilities So this here is a high-level snapshot of the timeline from the time we receive the application, and the arrows on your right indicate the trigger points when we, the IDA, receives money. So in the first red arrow, then if you look over to the application fee, $1,500. So one of the, if I can back up for a minute, one of the objectives when we were creating and suggesting incentives was how do we not use general funds? How do we have economic development have their own revenue source to be able to do various projects within the county? So what is typical is that these fees go to the IDA, and those funds can be used then to finance or support other economic development initiatives, if they choose to do so, that do not rely on the general fund and are not subject to, you know, they're not public funds, so they're able to, they have more leeway in what they can do with them. And this is a little bit about who does what and when. So first of all, the application is received, and it's received by staff. Then they send it off for legal to review. They obtain the Dunn &amp; Bradstreet report, they create the staff report, and then distributes to the IDA board, and the application fee is accepted. So that was that first arrow. Those fees that I was showing you, that's typically what the other counties collect, so just to remain competitive, that's what we were suggesting. And then the IDA reviews the application in a public meeting. They have to make sure they meet a certain criteria that is set forth in the statute, and then they recommend either approval or disapproval to the county commission. Either way, it still goes before you to approve the project, and then that fee is collected at the end of the approval. So the timeline from start to finish conveniware, up to about 10 weeks. So what's the benefit to the county? It creates that independent revenue stream for economic development projects, where it's non-reliant on general fund. It's additional tool in our toolbox for recruitment and expansion of economic development projects, and it makes Flagler County competitive with surrounding counties. So it's just, it's a nod to businesses that we're serious about economic development and that we're open for business. Again, the benefits to the company, lower interest rate and more liberal use of bond proceeds than allowed under a typical loan. So the IDA is made up of five board members, and back in November, we had a recommendation to get a wide variety of subject matter experts. The board is free to deviate from this suggestion, but in November, this is what we were tasked with. Someone with a CPA background or some sort of financing, accounting, attorney, commercial banker, a real estate, commercial real estate broker, and kind of an at-large seat of business leader within the community, or just someone who owns a business here in the county. So down there in the fine print, we, under further scrutiny, found that we must designate residents and electors of the county as members of the authority. And so those bullet points are required by statute, as well as those staggered terms.
Ms. Lukasik, can you go back? I just want to, I guess, clarify the, being a resident and registered to vote in Flagler County, those are statutory requirements or our own requirements?
Yes, the statute, I listed it there, and then I printed it. The aforementioned resolution, so that's when you create the IDA, shall designate not less than five persons who are residents and electors of the county as members of the authority created for said county.
Okay, so that goes back to the five. It can be more, but at least five have to be registered voters and residents in the county.
I'll leave that to Sean.
But we're looking for five to start off the IDA board, or is that still up to us?
We can go more than five. Your resolution from November had five persons, and we can always amend that.
So a sixth could be a non-resident of the county? Or they all have to be residents?
No, they have to be electors of Flagler County.
Okay, every single one of them? That's, okay, very good. Thank you.
So although today, you're not selecting the applicants, you'll do that Monday. That's in your Monday packet, all of the applications. Some of the applicants are here just to be available because there may be a lot of questions, and so that they all don't fall on Monday. Some are here as well. So we received 14 applications. We have in the packet also the different categories that they qualify for. Out of the 14, four now would be ineligible due to not living in Flagler County.
Right, four are not eligible, is that what you said?
Correct, and we've highlighted it in the chart that was provided in the packet for Monday.
Which leaves us, we don't see.
10, in the packet for Monday. Today.
Is meeting, right.
So we're kind of getting a little bit ahead of Monday, just in case there's lengthy questions that they, that you all wanted to ask the applicants. Also, if you wanted to dive further into the details of IDAs and the boards, Dolores and I are available anywhere up to 9:00 AM on Monday.
Can we get printouts of the, of the agenda, at least the applicants?
Do you want to see the, have them pull up the chart?
Or if you can pull it up, that would be okay.
So it's under Monday's, in Monday's folder.
So Ms. Amy, that leaves us without a commercial banker. Is that correct?
Yes. So what you could choose to do is you could either have us continue to search and appoint four for now, or you can say, hey, although we don't have one right now, there's two really good X-type of categories, and you can put them in their place. So these were the recommended professions. So you can, on Monday, not today, you then can decide how you want the makeup of the board to be.
What do you, what do you suggest if we don't have one of the key roles filled, like commercial banker?
Yeah, if it's important to you to have that, then Dolores and I will go back and continue, very targeted outreach to those folks. And you would have four, and then we would work really hard to get the, to bring a selection to you.
We could get, we could select five and duplicate one, and then still, or, right.
Yep.
And still look for, advertise for a commercial banker.
Sure.
Yep.
Right, we could add more.
It's really up to you.
And then leave that spot open in addition.
Right.
Thank you.
We can keep the application process open and just continue to bring candidates forward.
Any other questions for Ms. Lukasik?
Okay, the charts.
While that's loading, can I ask a quick question? You talk about the funding fee. At the beginning, it's $1,500 up to $75,000. Can you repeat where those funds are going to come from again?
The applicant.
The potential applicant.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, with that, we, if it's okay with everybody, we'll, we'll treat this as public comment for this item, and those that are in the audience that are applicants can come up. We'll give them three minutes, up to three minutes, to introduce themselves, and this will be for a regular public comment. So you may not be an applicant, but if you wanted to comment on the IDA board presentation, you're welcome to come and speak. So we'll treat this as, as public comment. So as you approach the podium, just state your name. If you're an applicant, state your name and which of the categories you fit, and we'll go ahead and open up for public comment. So who wants to be first? Good afternoon. All the way to that mic, just pull it down so we can hear you. There you go.
All right. Hi, I'm Bruce Parker, and I live in Hammock Dunes, and I am a voter, sometimes a good voter, sometimes not. To give you a quick background, I've lived here now approaching five years. So we moved here in the COVID period, December of 20. Bought a home in Hammock Dunes. Along the way, I met Greg over here, Davis, and he recruited me to come, become an applicant for you all. My background primarily is large corporations, but as well, I've been a consultant myself. Background's fairly heavy in large aviation companies, American Airlines, senior executive, responsible primarily for all the technology into the company of Americans, so flight operations, maintenance, but as well, the external travel agency called Sabre. So I spent quite a bit of time there, learned a lot, got advanced to become the president of a major division of the company. Later, I moved then to Miami, Florida for Ryder Systems, got recruited and became the head of their technology for about four years. We grew the company into logistics pretty heavy. Then I got recruited by United Airlines out of Chicago, and a great boss, Jerry Greenwald, chairman, and went to work for them, and ran essentially all their technology and the revenue channels. Had the opportunity with Jerry to do a lot of development in the internet world. So with that support, I recruited other airlines, and we created a company called Orbitz, which you may have heard of or maybe have used.
And what was it again?
Also the head of the Star Alliance.
The name of the company again?
Orbitz. It's an internet booking company.
Okay, gotcha.
And then after that, I went to work for a company I'd been on the board of directors, public company named Sapient Corporation. And I'd been there about 10 years as a board member, and then became also an employee of the company, senior employee, and calling mainly on very large firms, selling our services, et cetera, supporting our staff worldwide. I had the opportunity by contract to retire, of which I did, and then went into consulting myself, and started doing that with very large corporations around the world and a lot in Europe. So I spent a few years in London, starting Orbitz-like company called Apodo, and then also with a large GDS company there. And then I also was on the board of another public company called Aeronet Systems, and I'd been on its board for quite a while. And it was an air cargo company based out of Columbus, Ohio. Operated about 130 aircraft, scheduled part 135 company, had about 35 Lear jets. We spun up a passenger division in that, where we were running private chargers. And that company then, unfortunately and unfortunately, because we had to get rid of our CEO, and we looked around the boardroom and said, who has aviation real experience? And the mirror came out. So I stepped in as the CEO for about a year and a half in that company. The company had very large MRO or maintenance repair operations for itself, which might be a potential for what you all have out here at the airport. And I see my time's up, and the agenda came back, and that's me in a short synopsis on business. Married, got two kids, and enjoy Palm Coast.
Well, one quick question. What made you relocate to Palm Coast?
Well, I was living in Miami, and COVID transpired. And I lived in a beautiful area down in Coral Gables along the bay, had a boat and everything, and enjoyed it. COVID came, and unfortunately, I don't know if you know about the traffic in Miami, but it got a lot worse even during COVID, if you believe that, because I lived along the Bay Area, so the road went only north-south, and there's private schools all over Coconut Grove, there's three of them, and there's several, three more down south where I live. So in the morning, you couldn't get out of your house before 10:30 because of traffic. Every individual had to drive their child to school. No school buses were allowed, no carpooling was allowed. So between 10:30 and 2:30, you didn't get out of the house. And I said, well, this is bad. And that's when I started looking, and I said, time to retire anyway. And 2020, I did fully, and said, well, let's look around. We accidentally came up here and saw Hammock Dunes and saw the area. So this looks like a very nice place, and it is, so.
Well, I think we have a lot of accidental relocations just by getting off the interstate, so thank you for your story. I have a feeling I'm going to be extremely humbled by everybody's resume and work experience, but you've, you've.
I was a wanderer.
Appreciate that.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Good story, good luck to you.
Welcome, face. Hello, sir.
Good afternoon, and pleasure to be here. I'm David Alphen, a resident of Palm Coast and Flagler County. And I, I'll be brief. My resume is a matter of public record. I think you all have the details. The only thing I would add to that is I'm currently a graduate student at the University of Florida, finishing a master's degree in urban and regional planning, which is a way that I have brought together all of the experience I have enjoyed over the last several years. The reason I'm speaking is I want to congratulate and applaud you for identifying this potential tool to use going forward in what could possibly be some rather turbulent financial revenue times that we're all potentially aware of. So obviously, it makes us competitive with those surrounding counties. I've actually worked with the folks up at St. John's on their program and several of the others, and am intimately familiar with the bonding process, and you just have to go back again and look at public record to see that. But I think this is a really good move. If you choose me, you'll certainly get 100% of my attention. If not, I will support the committee in every way I can. And I'm here to answer, since it's a workshop, any questions you might have at this moment.
I'm good. I appreciate you.
I told you I would be brief, so there you go. All right.
Congratulations on being brief, David. That's wonderful.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think these gentlemen know how to queue up and get ready.
Been done this before. This is Ray Ricky, resident of Flagler County and Palm Coast. My background, I presume you have my resume, is right in line to what you're building here. I was chairman of the Economic Development Council in McKinney, Texas, where we recruited, and we did business and expansion for companies. We went to the governor's office in Austin many times to get money from the state. We were successful twice in one year at two separate $1 million programs for a expansion of Raytheon Corporation, and also moving a company, insurance company from Alabama, and who's now Globe Life, to McKinney, Texas. We, as an economic development corporation, we were able to not only utilize government funding from the state, but also our local city funding, where we were able to do forgivable loans based upon potential. upon potential tax revenues, employment, and other areas that we deem necessary for our city and the county. I was also deputy mayor of our city for seven years, chairman of the Chamber of Commerce, chairman of that economic development corporation for eight years. And so that's my basis of my government service. And from a business perspective, I was with many different Fortune 500 companies, from Black &amp; Decker to Walt to Fortune Brands, where we were out there selling. And this is exactly what we need to have, not only just the ability to fund and recruit businesses or expansion of local businesses, but also market our community. We have one of the, we have two assets in this community that are, that aren't going to be anywhere else unless they have them, the beach and the airport. They're not building new beaches. They're not letting you have new airports. So on the airport side, McKinney was a small reliever airport. We were able to get an FAA tower. We were able to get customs. We were able to move corporate jets into the airport, which on January 1st, they got to pay their taxes. Airports are a great resource for revenue for the community because they don't bring any people. There's no infrastructure, there's no burden on the school systems. We work very closely with the school districts, the surrounding cities, and the county to build a program to where even if we didn't get a business we were going after, we looked at supply chain opportunities for ancillary businesses. There's never a give up. Even if you don't get it, there's always opportunities around it. Flagler County has got a tremendous amount of land that is available for development that is sitting there that we can utilize as an asset also. It's not all about money. It's all about your resources. It's all about going to market in the correct manner and identifying those opportunities that other people don't have that we do. So any questions I could answer for you, be more than happy. I will be at the meeting next week for you all if you need to get ahold of me.
Thank you for sharing your background. What made you come to Flagler County?
Well, founded by accident. We were in Texas for 30 years. We had a large property that someone from California wanted and we sold. We went to Miami and we're down there for a little while. And my wife goes, where are the kids going to stay when they come visit? And I said, that hotel looks nice right there. And she goes, that's not happening. So we started driving from Miami north and every place we went to just wasn't home. It didn't feel like the right place. We cruised up to the South Gate off A1A of Hammock and said, what are you guarding back there? And we came in, fell in love with it, and it didn't take long, and we're here. And that's the beauty of, I think, also that we have is we're the best kept secret. And that's a good thing. Now we got to get out there and promote it. So that's, that's what brought us here and we love it. We're not leaving. And so giving back to the community is important. And that's why I'm here.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Yes. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Richard Mileby and I also live in Hammock Dunes. And before I start, I would like to hand out these right here.
Thank you.
When Greg Davis told me about this position, one of the things I thought that was excellent was the background in which I have. And I've done everything from supermarkets to assisted living with Marriott, to hotels, to residential. I'm the person who actually put together the original, the Ritz Carlton residences. So I'm very, you know, up to speed on that.
The brand new ones?
Yes, sir. The thing about getting new development here is you have to have the amenities that go with it. You're not going to get a corporate home office, if you will, unless you have everything close by. And I mean, nice, close by, upscale stuff. And Palm Coast deserves upscale. You look at what the hotels are here, and I'll use hotels as an example. They're buried. They're not in a great location. They're, they don't charge much because they don't offer much. What I'd love to do is find something that near water, where there's views in the, that would be great. You can charge a lot more. And the thing about a hotel is they provide a thing called TOT tax, transient occupancy tax. That goes to the general fund of the county and they can dispose of it whichever way they want. So it works great. But you need to have amenities. You need to have restaurants that are really nice. You need to have hotels. You need to have water. You need to have, because the world changed with COVID. It used to be you just go into the business sections for certain types of stuff. Today's day and age, they don't. They want to have tourism and business combined. Palm Coast has that rare quality. And that can bring that all together. And working on a master plan, not just an individual, is what we need to concentrate on because you need to get and garnish upscale, quality tenants that are going to make Palm Coast home. And I have the ability to do that with multiple functions, with multiple knowledge of the industries and stuff like that. And the thing about Palm Coast, which I love, is it's far enough away from an airport, but yet close enough. So it works great. You don't want to hear planes, but you don't want to drive four hours to get to an airport either. You have Jacksonville an hour and 10 minutes away. You have Orlando an hour and 30 minutes away. Works well. So with all those things combined and making this a full, upscale development opportunity zone, let's work together as a team and make it happen. Because I think we can, and I think we have a lot to offer these types of people to come here. But we need to be full service, not one dimensional.
Great. It sounds like you'd be a tremendous asset to our tourism team as well with your background. So, and what made you move to Palm Coast?
I lived in Windermere and my wife and I were looking for a place that was quiet and, but busy. And we would offer a lot and we just did a lot of touring. This is where we found it home. Been here for four and a half years, it'll be five years in August. And it's very exciting. I mean, it's, it's a great area. A lot of happened, lots are happening around here, quite a bit with the construction in the streets, the construction over the bridge, the new homes, the Ritz Carlton coming. And the fact that Ritz Carlton's coming steps up the dance, if you will.
Well, it seems like we have a lot of COVID relocations as well. And a lot of great soundbites. Luckily, we have the recording from today because there's some good soundbites for potential marketing.
We got a whole, I was gonna say, we have a whole new marketing plan. Thank you.
Thank you for applying. Questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Sean Roten. I am actually the director of oncology operations at Advent Health. Originally moving down here, I love the question of why Palm Coast, so I'll sort of lead with that. But so originally, whenever I moved down here, it was for my job. And we settled in St. Augustine for proximity for finding a job for my wife, who is also in healthcare. And once we were able to secure her employment also at Advent here in Palm Coast, in that time period, I'd already been able to connect because of my role with multiple members of the, of the community. And it was very evident that Palm Coast was just different than a lot of the other communities that I've lived in and certainly different than St. Augustine. So that, that very tight knit feel is what really led us to move permanently to Palm Coast and really put down the roots and really embed myself in the community as much as possible. I became aware of this, this opportunity really through the lead Flagler program that the Chamber of Commerce is putting together. And so traveling around and learning a little bit about the community was, was a really great opportunity. And it really just sparked an interest in me to, to find a way to give back, not specifically to the community, but I really have no motive other than that. I just want to do whatever I can to, to help the community, be a voice of the people, and continue in my role at Advent to, to do what I can as, as a member of this community. So, so we've been here for about, we were about seven months in St. Augustine and we became residents in December of 23 here. So not COVID related. So, but, but we're, we're very happy to be here. We love this community. It's treated as well. The school systems are wonderful. My, my two daughters are both at FPC, so I had to buy all new wardrobe to be green. It's the purple where we came from. So, but, but we're, we're very excited to be here and just love this opportunity.
Oh, great. Thank you. And did you say your wife works in St. Augustine?
She works Palm Coast also. Yeah. So we're both in healthcare here.
Is that with the new hospital expansion?
So she, she is a primary care. And so I'm the lucky first tenant of the Freitag Cancer Center because I work in oncology. And eventually, I think she will join me in that building. So not by, not by any plan or anything, but it'll be, it'll be nice. Lunch breaks will be easy.
Yep. Advent's a great corporate community member for us, so.
Yeah. They allow lots of opportunities to be connected to the community and I really appreciate that. So that's the whole reason why I wanted to move up in, in, in my roles and just be able to connect better with the community. So.
I think it makes a good connection when people see the new buildings going up the cancer center or the hospital. And we talk about the economic impact of those buildings, but you're a great example.
Yeah. Lots of wonderful impacts that that building offers, but also, you know, the, the increase in populations continuing. So I think there's going to be a definite healthcare impact with, with anything we decide to expand in the community. So hope to be a part of that.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you for volunteering for the, and applying. Appreciate that.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon. Another familiar face. Hello, sir.
Familiar face, yes. I'm John Phillips, president of the Palm Coast Flagler Regional Chamber of Commerce. Unfortunately for this board, I am a resident of Volusia County and not eligible to participate in an official capacity. However, behalf of the Chamber of Commerce, I just want to express our support and any role that we as the chamber and I personally can play in an unofficial capacity, we are here to support this organization and the IDA and everything that's moving forward. So I did want to come publicly state that, that the chamber is fully behind this. And whatever we can do to help, we are here to do that. So.
And you've got a, a wealth of experience brought with you from Volusia County and with Embry-Riddle. And we look forward to.
The expansion of the airport and things that related to the airport, things related to the sports complex, all those right up my alley. And appreciate Sean with the soundbite about our lead Flagler program that the chamber runs. That might be a way to help get someone here. But yeah. And then I was served on the tourism board in the Daytona Beach area CVB. So happy to help Amy and all of her team however we can here at the chamber. So again, just want to pledge our support for, for everything this group is doing.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I'm Chad Raymond, applicant. Apologize if I'm a little nervous. I had this great speech played for June 2nd meeting and my suit was laid out with my wife's help.
It's crazy how that podium and microphone, no matter how good of a public speaker you are, it affects you in a strange way.
Yeah. I was working today, so I wanted to tend to, you know, get some information and watch the presentation. But I was, I was, you know, doing my preparation.
We appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Yeah. So yeah, I'm a native, so not a relocation. Survived through the COVID joy here. But I grew up in Ormond and went to Seabreeze, graduated Seabreeze and enlisted in the Air Force Delayed Entry Program and did 20 years in the Air Force, combined between active duty and reserve. Did a little bit of time as a, you know, jumping ahead. My, my mother Susan is a real estate appraiser and I'm a real estate appraiser and broker here in town. And my mom's been, had the appraisal business since I was a little kid and I grew up in the filing cabinets, doing appraisal work and delivering appraisals as some of my first jobs. And like most young men, when I graduated high school, that job was boring to me. So I went in the Air Force and I got out of the Air Force and transitioned to the reserve and became a police officer because I wanted to do fun, high adrenaline activity jobs. And about 10 years into that, my wife and mother both approached me and said, you got two little kids and, you know, we appreciate what you're doing in that line of work. I was working undercover at the time and there was a lot of dangerous situations we were in. So I decided to break my career with law enforcement. I worked for Volusia County Sheriff's Office for 10 years and pursue the private sector. And it was the best thing that ever happened to me. So I started off training under my mom and got licensed as an appraiser. And we've been doing that, I've been doing that here for about 10 years now. So I guess my strength and attributes to the IDA would be just a tremendous experience and knowledge of the county and the city. I've lived in Seminole Woods for 18 years now total, built two houses in there. And I've been in thousands of properties in the city. Every day I'm in houses, you know, tending clients' needs, whether it be valuation services for purchase transactions, refinances, divorce, litigation. I've been involved in some of the VAB petitions briefly. And I've, I've been interested in that in the past as well. So the IDA came along and I, I just felt it'd be a really good opportunity for me to do some community service outside of just the private sector work I've been doing here for 10 years and leverage some of my experience in the Air Force and working for the county government in Volusia, where I became familiar with, to try to bring some really well tailored industrial and commercial aspects to the county. I think it's a great option for this vetting process with incentivizing the revenue bond to bring in businesses that the county and the board really believes are appropriate and in the best interest of the county. So I've really, that was really appealing to me, especially in light of some of the discontent in the community with some of those potential industries that have been presented to you all before. I think this really gives us some leverage to utilize these revenue bonds. And yeah, I'm just a young guy, entrepreneur, excited to put my talents and abilities to contribute to the county. And I decided that this would be a good way for me to try and do that. So thank you all very much for your time.
All right. Well, very good. And thank you for being here. Appreciate you applying.
And I'll be there next week, too.
Okay, very good.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Don Turlington. I have lived in Flagler County for the last 14 years. My late wife and I moved here 2010 from New York, where we lived for 35 years. But going back further than that, I was born and raised in Gainesville. My great grandfather moved there in 1910 to take over the agriculture department in the University of Florida. And my family essentially stayed there ever since. That the things that I would like to, to offer, if it would help, is I have a background both as a certified public accountant and as a lawyer. I went to the University of Florida and became an accountant there, practiced with the large accounting firm Arthur Andersen for a year, went back after a stint in the Army, went back to law school at the University of Florida. And after that, moved to New York City to attend the graduate tax program for lawyers at New York University. That, that was the, the primary thing that I have done professionally. I was a Wall Street tax lawyer for 30 years. My clients included companies like Goldman Sachs, Honeywell, Merrill Lynch, Prudential, Verizon, and ITT, which is actually how I found out or learned about Palm Coast. Because one of the first clients that I had when I went to New York was ITT. And I remember sitting in board meetings with the, the board of, of the company and hearing Harold Janine scream about how much money they were losing, you know, on the swamp in Florida that now has become a beautiful oasis where I'm fortunate enough to live. But in addition to the accounting background that I think I can offer and the legal experience that I've had, turns out that the primary law firm that I worked with on Wall Street was one of the five, what were called national bond firms issuing and representing issuers of municipal bonds. Your revenue bonds that you're proposing to use with the IDA. Your revenue bonds that you're proposing to use with the IDA would be making use of those types of financings. While I was not a bond lawyer per se, by virtue of osmosis over 20 years with the firm, I learned a good bit about what bond lawyers do, and I would like to think that I can interpret some of the things that the bond counsel you'll hire will be saying, and convey that to, to you and to the other members of the, uh, the authority. As I said, that, uh, lived here, I have a, a small business that I run for my family here in Flagler County, but for the most part, I'm retired, and I would like to be able to, to help with your effort, which I think is a first-rate job. I think it'll diversify your revenue and increase the tax base that you have if we can make this work.
Right.
So I hope that will work out, and I congratulate you all for making the decision to proceed this way.
Thank you. And you have a, a very unique connection to the history of Palm Coast tonight with ITT.
Uh, yes, it was an experience. Turns out that one of the primary onsite project managers here, when the project was, was begun, was my best friend in elementary school. And, you know, I'm not sure what happened to him since then, but I remember coming down here, and I think he did a great job, even if ITT didn't end up making much money.
Thank you very much. Any other public speakers for the, either IDA applicant or anything regarding the Industrial Development Authority? All right, great. Well, thank you to everybody that came today, the applicants that, that came and spoke. It's great to hear from you and, and hear the stories that you were able to share and your background. So thank you very much. I appreciate that. All right, we're going to move on to, if there's anything else on the IDA anybody wanted to?
I just want to thank everybody who came in. The expertise and talent in our county, when I first moved here 21 years ago, I was on a jury the first week, and I thought, "What am I doing? Where did I go?" And this is a magical place. I have found the most intelligent, successful people here that enjoy what we all enjoy regardless of what our lifestyles have been. And I am thrilled to have had the opportunity to hear all these people. What a, what a wonderful opportunity for everybody, especially for our county. So thank you for stepping up. Thank you for coming in and opening yourself up to the opportunity, and I'm really thrilled. I can't have wished for better choices than we got today. I, I, I'm in shock. Thank you again.
Right. I, I hear all the time, we've got an excellent talent pool of retired people in Hammock Dunes, Grand Haven, Ocean Hammock, and today was a great example of people that are coming out to volunteer for the IDA and, and the, some great experience, a wealth of knowledge coming to us. So thank you again for volunteering and, and filling out those applications. I appreciate it.
And to piggyback that, thank you to the Chamber. They helped with our outreach. Mr. Greg Davis, the Homeowners Association helped us spread the word, so all the kudos to them. So thank you to those partners.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Thank you, Mr. Phillips. All right. Well, with that, we'll move on to our second item on the agenda, and that's a discussion on the county attorney, the application process. Mr. Salinas, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, sir. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Jorge Salinas, Deputy County Administrator. I'll be covering for Charlie Picano, our HR Director, as he's actually in the Northeast Florida Leadership Training today. So I'll go ahead and cover his piece today.
Charlie, and Mr. Picano, he's in the Regional Council Leadership.
Right, Council Leadership. Oh, sorry. So today I'm going to recap of the process of the county attorney recruitment process. Charlie and his team divided this into four phases. Phase one was where Al Hadid, our current county attorney and HR, updated the job description. Then the board had an opportunity to set the minimum requirements, and that took place between April 1st and April 21st. The second phase was the job posting. It was posted for 21 days at the locations that, that I have here, like Florida Bar Career Center, Florida Association of Counties, GovernmentJobs.com, LinkedIn, ICMA, which is International City and County Management Association. The Florida Bar Career Center, the Florida Bar Attorneys here have access to that information, so it went out to all those folks that, that subscribe to that. That was, Phase Two took place from April 23rd to May 23rd. We're currently in Phase Three, which HR has reviewed all the applications that have come, come in, and based on the minimum requirements that the board set for this position, 10 applicants applied, eight would move as meeting the minimum requirements and were shared with the board a few days ago. Today we'll have an option to, if that's board's desire, to rank the eight candidates and bring in the top five or top three, whichever the county wants to do with that information. So that's where we are today. And then Phase Four, H, is actually going through the interview process, which includes one-on-one interview with each of the Commissioners. We included a Board of County Commissioner panel interview and meet and greet for the community to participate as well, and then have the board an opportunity to rank and vote for the candidate. Then we'll start contract negotiations and bring the contract back to the board. So just wanted to provide an outline of the recruiting process so we're all up to speed on this, on this process.
Jorge, on that, that last slide, the thing that troubled me when I saw it was everything happened on the 23rd.
Yes.
It's not quite true, is it?
Yeah.
I mean, we're, we, the interviews are going to take longer and the...
Yeah, since there's five Commissioners, we're going to do Ron Robbins, so it'll be five hours of interview, and we'll just rotate them. And then, in the evening, we'll come back and do the meet and greet, and then have the, the board, the board interviews as a group. And this can change. This is what we are proposing as a process, but it can change. We can have it in two different days, but the thing is, when you bring candidates from different locations, you want to maximize the time and utilize that time together. So that's why we put it all in one day. So we'll have one-on-one interviews in the morning. In the evening, we have a meet and greet, and then you have the board, as a board, a panel interview, and then voting if that's what the pleasure of the board.
Okay, thank you.
Move to the next slide, please. Okay. We also wanted to ensure that you were aware that all the candidates that were moved as qualified candidates are Florida Bar certified. We provide their board bar number and the date they were admitted to the Florida Board. And all the candidates, as you see, none of them have any disciplinary act, disciplinary action as stated at the Flor- Florida Board Bar website. Another thing that we wanted to provide is an option. I know there was discussion or questions about potentially having this done by an external agency. We wanted to provide you that information. Charlie from the HR Director and his team went out and did some, found us some quote on how a process like this would take place, and also what the cost and fees would be for hiring a county attorney. So the first one is Robert Half, RobertHalf.com. Their fee is 22% of the candidate's salary, which translates between $38,000 and $55,000. Corn Ferry at CornFerry.com charges one-third of the first year's compensation made in three installments. And Legal People, which are, the website is Partners dot group, dash group dot com, they have a 25% fee of the first year's compensation, which translates between $43,762,500 to conduct this process of hiring a county attorney. So we wanted to provide that as a data point for you to have in your, in your decision-making process.
So are you, are you saying that these three firms all have a reputation and a history of hiring successful attorneys at the county level?
That is my understanding.
Or are these just?
No, these are for hiring, like, attorneys, yes.
Just attorneys?
They may hire other things, but I think they specialize in attorneys.
Oh, Robert Half does not specialize in attorneys.
But we chose not to do that.
Yeah, it's just an option. We provided, the HR Department went and looked up from some quotes, and they have their own databases that they can actually share this information and potentially attract candidates. But it was not the direction from the board, but we just wanted to provide that information since there was a question about potentially having this done by a third party. We just wanted to provide that information. So today, if, it's the board's pleasure to continue with this process as it is, we have a spreadsheet ready after the presentation. We have the eight candidates, and I did have a conversation with Commissioner Pennington, because she's not going to be able to vote today, and she was not interested in providing a vote for any of the candidates. She shared with me that she would like to keep this open for a while and not make a selection or go through interview process. So I just wanted to share that, because that was her feedback to me that I want to make sure that you heard from her, since she's not here today.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm going to mention my opinion. I went through this over and over again.
Okay.
Three or four weeks is too short a time to make any decision that we're going to be living with for the next. My term is three and a half years. Just a sheet with information does not determine hiring anybody. I don't, and this is not just a job. This is a true commitment to our county. We also have to be able to trust and feel comfort with that person as well. So I have three and a half years to deal with them. If they're cooperative or uncooperative, that's something I'm going to have to deal with, too. So just putting out that they've gone to school and they've had some jobs and everything sounds great, but this is not a daytime job. This is a full-time commitment to the county and to our residents as well, to protect our interests and keep us healthy. So I think that there's a definite need for an extension of times where we can do more marketing, and I, this is very limited in my opinion for such a large job.
Okay.
My personal opinion, so I would like to extend it. And since you just read that, I had that in plan when I first spoke. So thank you, Jorge, for that. Appreciate it.
Thank you for coming, Commissioner. So as the next steps, uh, just here. So we would like to provide the board an opportunity to guide us on what they would like to see as this process moving forward. So we have the option to continue the current process. The county attorney interviews will be set either for June, June 23rd or June 30th, or whichever date the board is comfortable with. And as I shared earlier, will take a day to do the entire process or two days, whatever the board would like to do with that. The Commissioners will have one-on-one interviews with the top candidates, top three, five candidates that they select. We'll have a meet and greet, and then we'll have a, a board panel interviews. The other option is to consider as a staffing agency. We just went out and quoted three. It's a costly process. We can go out and solicit more information if that's the board's pleasure, but just wanted to provide you that at least the numbers seem to be between 22 and 30% of the compensation, of the salary of the position that you're hiring. The next, the last option, or one of the options we have here, is to pause this current selection process, leave it open, and if we stumble upon the timeline that Mr. Hadid is going to be retiring, the other option you have is to have Sean be the interim until you complete this process. So you have that option and keep it. We can post this job as we've done in the past, where you can actually post it up, open until fill. And then as we continue to receive applications, we continue to share with the board, and when, when the board is ready, we can actually bring back this process and go through the interview process as you wish. So just wanted to pause there and see if any questions, any guidance on how you would like to proceed. I just shared Commissioner Pennington's feedback, so, and we just heard Commissioner Richardson's feedback, so I open it up to the board again.
All right.
There is a, I, I did do some research myself. There is a convention of, of those, the lawyers that, in June.
That is correct, yes.
Of, I don't know why we wouldn't have maybe a representative there from the county.
I believe we do have.
Soliciting. Well, you know, like at convention, there's usually opportunity to have greeting and meeting people and possibly opening up the doors a little bit wider. I'm sure Al has done his professional work through this, because he's thorough about it. But I think we can open the door to a couple more candidates that may fit more comfortably here as well than what the short ones we have in such a short time. That's, that's coming up in June. We had one in April, and we missed it, that I know of.
The conference normally will attend County Attorney's Office folks. If you're, if I'm understanding what you're saying is probably have somebody from the HR recruitment team attend and try to, you know, promote this somehow in there and try to get some, some time with some of the attorneys. I, I don't know what that process would look like, but we can definitely market this with those folks. I think there's avenues for that.
You're going to have a larger audience. There's got to be 500 to 1,000 lawyers in Florida that might have that expertise or talent or want to maybe relocate to the magical city of, county of Flagler.
Yeah. Yeah. So just to remind you, the Florida Bar Association, I believe, and Al can probably, you know, validate this, the Florida Bar members have access to this forum, and since we post it there, we can extend it and continue to post it there. But they all, the Florida folks, attorneys are going to go to this conference, will have access to that, already have had access to the information that we just posted.
I just meant spotlighting it.
Okay, I understand.
Sometimes you have to put a little energy. When they got 1,000 things to look at, you gotta sort of sell the product once in a while, too.
Yeah.
I think we've got something good to sell here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I guess I'll, let me just chime in. After reviewing, ranking the resumes and the applicants, first want to say thank you to everybody that applied. A wide range of experiences and, and locations.
Yeah.
The, after, after reviewing everything and the expectations that we were hoping for, I don't think there was that, I didn't find that, the rock star applicant that would elevate the department. In the end, Mr. Moylan's my top-ranked applicant after looking at all of these things. And I think if I'm going to go and continue on the process, I would, I would be open to hearing everybody else's thoughts on, on either having Sean as interim for a period of time. We've got a great staff between Sean, Sarah, Jen. I mean, we've got a good core group and staff, and the other applicants are, we're getting, except for a couple, that didn't have the, the county or the coastal county experience. They're all in that same range of looking to bump up. Either they've been a very short-term, a couple of years as a county attorney or a city attorney, or they're trying to get to the county attorney, a top-level position. And I'd like to, I'd like to see how the department works with Sean as an interim and the, the personality that comes along with that shift in the office. I think I would be, that would be my, my, my preference at this point.
I feel that I too have Sean as my number one candidate, but I, I was very uncomfortable ranking the rest of them, because I'd have never met them, don't know anything about them other than what's on paper. them other than what's on paper. And like Andy said, there's, there's a lot of people, a lot of them just are looking for that next job, you know, to, which is great. They want to move up. They want to be a county attorney. So, but until, unless I interview them, I feel very uncomfortable ranking just based on their resumes and best. So that, I was a little scary. I did it. I ranked them, but not comfortable with it, so.
Yeah, and this ranking is just to, normally to bring, you know, select the people that you want to interview based on the facts, on their, you know, resumes and information they provided. It's not just to rank them like if they're going to be your, you know, your, anything besides that, there's no knowledge.
Well, that should have been explained, I'm just going to jump in here. That should have been explained to us. For those of us that have hired employees before, for people, for those of us that are intimately, can relate to how big of a job this is.
Right.
The word rank, I refuse to rank. I'll, I'll admit it publicly.
Yeah.
You don't rank until you know them. So I, I'm prepared to give names of people that I would like to meet, but I'm not going to rank anybody and then make it public record. So if you wanted to know who I'd like to talk to, I have that. I, I agree with many of the comments made up here that I was not overly impressed with what we got. However, I knew that going into this. Posting a job at this level is not the way to recruit. So unless you have any other recruitment strategies that we can use to actively recruit, and we don't have to hire someone to do that, I don't know how we do that, because a recruiting firm is what you do. We did not decide to go down that route. Sean is also on my list of people to talk to. However, this job requires a lot of administration, hiring, firing, evaluations, budgets, meetings, conferences. I don't know where his level is, although he provided a huge amount of information, 10 times more than any other applicant. I don't, I don't know, I don't know that he's ready for that. So I won't know that until I talk to him, right?
Right.
I did mention that I was fine with an interim until we found if, and we may not find the ideal candidate, but then that will leave a hole in, in the, in the legal department. So how do we fill the hole? We, we move Sean up, and then what? Poor Sarah gets inundated with everything that Sean was working on?
One of the things that we can do here as a, you know, recommendation for the board is, we have, we'll have funding in the current budget and perhaps in the next budget year where you can actually allow Sean to have these fundings, the salary that will be vacant when Mr. Hadid retires, and he can contract out some of the tasks that he deemed that could probably be, you know, help. It's kind of providing, right now, I know that our county attorney's office do outsource some tasks on specialties, because you can't have our attorneys be expert in all the different domains. So some of these tasks can be outsourced, and by providing some funding for them to do that, we'll provide that flexibility in the, you know, best of both worlds, where you have your internal attorneys, and then you have a period where you can actually outsource without overloading the both attorneys that are left. So that's a potential path forward with this recruitment process as well.
So as I see it, we either provide some interview names or we provide, I mean, you kind of have it here. We could, we continue with the process. I think they're looking for names that you would want to interview. I think we've eliminated, at least, I don't think we have at this stage, you would have to have, due to the time a staffing agency would want to do, you would have to have Sean come in as interim while they're doing that. And I don't, I don't think, that's a process I want to go through and spend the money on a staffing. And then at this point, the other one is, is pause the selection process. We can, we can have a set period of time to appoint Mr. Moylan as a, as an interim and allow him the opportunity to put his personality on the office and have the higher firing ability they're going to need staff. If you, if you put a timeline on it for a year, two years, or interim until you do and continue the, continue accepting applicants.
And as a side thing on this, Mr. Hadid has offered to extend his time for a month or two, from what I understand. So we do have some time to still go out and prospect for the right fit. And that I think is really more important than just a date certain. We need to get our act together and make sure we have continuity through the growth period.
Yeah, the only perspective is, you know, Mr. Hadid has been, you know, an attorney in this county for many years. If you want to see the performance of Mr. Moylan, you probably have to allow him to be interim so you can see that performance. If that's not.
No, that's not, I, I know, he's, he's available to us.
Oh, I see, yes, okay.
Onward.
Yeah.
So we do have the time and the capability of making it work in a smoother transition. That's my concern.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, I think we see the result of no recruitment. Anybody can post a job on, in the Wall Street Journal and get eight applicants, two of which, or 10, and two of which weren't qualified. I just don't see any level of professional recruiting. I don't see any efforts other than, well, everybody on the bar has access to this. I don't see Mr. Hadid reaching out to client, to colleagues, hey, my job's open. What do you think? You want to come in and talk about it? I don't, I don't see any kind of strategy other than posting this on the bar. And if this is all we're going to get, I guess we can ride it out, but unless there's any strategy, recruiting strategy put behind this, then we're just beating ourselves to death because this is what we'll continue to get for the next three weeks. Most people jump on it. If they're interested in it, they'll jump on it right away. I'm not a HR professional. I don't know what options are open to me, but this, if this is the level of work that we can produce at the county, then this is what we're going to get. So I'm not impressed.
Okay, so most of these agencies have a distribution list. That's how they actually, you know, the job goes posted. They email their normal folks that have applied before, and it's very similar process. I don't understand what process you're talking about that needs to be different. And if that's something that you have an idea, we are open to hearing to ideas. But this is a normal process. We normally recruit, and this is the process that most recruiting companies use to recruit.
Mr. Hadid, I saw you raise your hand.
I have something to say.
Thank you. I just wanted to say to the board, I think I might have mentioned it to some of you. I don't know if I've said it at a board meeting, but I have talked to county attorneys and city attorneys. I mean, I've been in the kind of law that I'm doing for over 40 years. So I know a lot of lawyers that are county attorneys, city attorneys, general counsels of agencies or high-level people in agencies, as well as those that practice in the land use area. That's a particularly needed service that we need now going forward. We're going to experience real high growth. And I, from the first week of March, I've been talking to colleagues, I don't know if, well, I think some of you know, I've been on the Board of Directors of the Florida Association of Counties more than 10 years. I chair a committee now. I've chaired other committees with the association. So I am very active, I don't know if many of you know, I am often a lecturer at the Continuing Legal Education Programs. By the way, not just for the county attorneys, but also the City Attorney Association. I'm very active with them. I know that you're aware that I've invested a lot of time in the short-term vacation rental issue. Well, when you think of that topically, you flashback to 2012 through about 2015, because that was when we did the legislation, when we succeeded in the litigation that was filed against us. But as you also know, every year, there's been an attempt to claw back all of those gains. Now, short-term rental regulation mostly affects municipalities. It's the municipalities that are very engaged in that process. So because of what I've done in vacation rentals, and I track it every single year, I've been tracking it since 2000, 2012, the minutia of it, I am interacting with those city lawyers who are interested in this issue. I interact with those lawyers on customary public recreation use, people that have copied our ordinances, both for that, short-term rules, et cetera. So I, I travel broadly, so to speak, not, not physically travel, through the internet, travel broadly. And I have been talking about the vacancy and letting individuals know about it, because they might know somebody. It might not be the person that would be interested, but they would, they would have the connections. Now, I'll tell you this. Okay, so I, because of that, I also look at who's hiring and what they're doing. There are a lot of counties now that are hiring not county attorneys and not city attorneys, but those underneath that level. I'm not seeing the mobility, I'm not seeing the vacancies in the county attorney world or the city attorney world where there is that opportunity to step up. I don't know how that may affect what we're doing, but I'm telling you, from what I see in the market, I mean, there's not a week that goes by that there isn't an ad from a local government looking for a staff attorney, an experienced, sometimes senior staff attorney, but I don't see them asking for city attorney, county attorney. Now, that to me would, I mean, I'm not an HR expert, but I would think that that would tend to have them flock toward us because we're an opening. This is an opportunity. These positions don't typically turn over because you have this institutional knowledge that you carry for the community, and your issues, your issues track back many, many, many years. Vacation rentals, a good example. Customary use, another example, 2016 to now. So the breadth of those issues requires somebody that makes that kind of commitment, acquires all that knowledge, and continues to apply it not just as legal knowledge, but also in watching out for the county, looking around the corner to see what's coming, making sure that the flanks are protected. So it is a significant undertaking, and I would assume that there are lawyers that are ready to be county attorneys or city attorneys, and I've certainly spread that word out. I'm not saying that's all that can be done, but I want the board to know that I have talked about this a lot with the colleagues as I talk to them.
It would seem to me that the type of applicant we should, we would get, and it's proven in the people that we have, is somebody who wants to be a county attorney and has not had that experience yet. I think we've got one in there that has been a county attorney. So that's really what we should expect to look at. And quite honestly, I'm very, I'm still uncomfortable trying to rank them without talking to them. So, I mean, if we need to get it down to five, I could probably say, like, these five, maybe I would like to interview, but, but I don't think it's necessary to keep the, keep it open any longer. I think we've had it open a long time for people to come get. And I, this may be what we got, and so.
For comparison purposes.
Let's interview them.
For comparison purposes. Is there any way to go back or look back where we posted it? Three weeks ago? Three weeks? I think it's been about three weeks?
Right, yeah.
And see what openings were there and what ones are closed? Is there any way to know what has closed? Like when, in real estate, we can go, we can figure out what house got sold because it goes in depending, then it goes in.
Yeah.
So it goes away, right? It's no longer active.
Right.
Is there any way that we can do that at where we posted this job?
I'm not sure. We'll, we'll check. I'm not sure, because sometimes when the postings go and they close, they completely, they're not available anymore. So we don't know which ones closed during that period of time to look for those. It's not like the real estate.
You don't know where your starting point was.
Yeah.
What information would you want to get, gather from that process?
Just to see how many others, I mean, I do it all the time, comparing, you know, my listings to everybody else's listings and, you know, who, who sold the last 3-2, you know, house. I mean, it's, I do it all the time, but what's selling, what isn't selling, what jobs are filling, what, like, like Attorney Al says, if, if in fact they're not filling, then they've gone vacant, they're, pull down the ad, right?
Yeah, we can see.
They pull down the posting.
Yeah, we can see if they've been open for 30 days.
But if you don't know what was posted when we posted, we don't know what was filled and what wasn't filled, so.
Yeah, because these places that we posted are nationwide, so we don't know what was there and closed. We just don't know. An alternative to the ranking by one through five, I, we had a discussion, Hayden and I had a discussion with Commissioner Carney where she was proposing to just give a number, one number. And if you do it that way, if that's where you want to go, if you just tell me the names of the five candidates without providing a ranking, we can put them in the spreadsheet, and then which candidate has, you know, the highest number would be the ones we bring.
Let's not number. Let me just, let's just give you the five names.
Yes.
We can see what names are common. If they're common to all three of us or all four of us, then we interview them.
Okay.
If, if we're all that far apart that all eight people have to come in, then we're going to have to do a different way.
And that's the, yeah.
But.
And we can do that. I can have Josh and team bring up the spreadsheet, and then if that's the way the board wants to go, you just provide a name, and we'll just put like a one on each, and then it's just the same value, and then we just see which ones are.
And how do we know that some of these people haven't already been hired or moved on?
We don't know that. They're active.
Right. So we could be enumerating all these people and have a choice of two, because I only have a choice of two.
Right.
I don't have five. I have two. The others, I feel.
Yeah.
Are not prepared to take this seat. And, and one comment on, on Al. Al's been in this seat how long yet, Al? 20 years, 30 years? At least 20.
I think combined 25 years.
25 years. So you think of somebody who's applying for this job, that may be aware of Al and his expertise and his talents and his standings, maybe they don't feel they come up to the, to the, to the plate. It can be intimidating to try to fill in the shoes of somebody who's done a courageous job. So I think that's why we need the marketing, looking, that we're looking for exciting new faces that are looking forward to a growing, healthy, financially stable community and things. You know, there's a marketing plan, and I don't see a marketing plan. I just see an advertisement. And this is not, this is not an office job. It's not a, it's not looking for somebody to take minutes. It's for somebody to make very, the most important decisions. I just don't take it very lightly, and I'm going to be critical on those situations because that's who I have to hire. And I'll leave it at that for me.
And I just wanted to provide the balance. That's why recruitment organizations exist, to provide that higher level, but it's going to cost you if you want that higher level of marketing and all those steps. We, we're providing you what we normally do to hire our directors, and we've been successful in getting those positions filled. It's the same process we've been using. But if you want a higher level of professionalism in this domain, that's why these companies exist, and they're going to charge you for that. Okay.
And my only problem with pursuing this further with interviews is, so the, the only, the top people that I would otherwise have ranked or asked to an interview are, one is, is a deputy.
a deputy city attorney currently, the other has only been a county attorney for two years, and I don't see, one, I don't want to have a, do the disservice of interrupting them to come interview when they're at the same level of our current deputy attorney who has the experience and has been working this for the past 10-plus years. I don't see the need to bring them in for an attorney. I would rather have our deputy given that opportunity, that we're looking to give these other people that aren't from here the same opportunity to take that step up. Doesn't, to me, I don't want to have to bother going that route with them. It's not that, you know, if somebody's going to come in to be Sean's boss, they need to have a different level of experience that he could further benefit from, like he did from Al. But given these applicants, it's time to give that gentleman the shot.
Understood. So.
I agree with that. Why don't we just make Sean, give him the job?
I mean, if we don't have, I think if there's, and I fully understand the new commissioners have not had the time with Mr. Moylan that we have, it could be an interim position if they need time to evaluate him further.
I would not just say automatic job. I don't think that's the way progression works. I think you earn your job. You don't just sit enough time to get it. And I like to have a relationship with that person. I have spent a lot of time with Mr. Moylan. I'm not against Mr. Moylan, but he's not the only person on the planet either.
Understood.
And he's got knowledge, but how far will that take him? And it's just not a turnover business. An interim is at least a start, because there's no preference of performance without Al. So he's got backup with Al right now. And when he's in interim, he won't have that. And that's going to determine the true value of his talent. So I'm not against him. Don't get me wrong. And I have spent many time, as Mr. Moylan can share, and I've shared with him my thoughts. So he's aware of my feelings about how he is, and I think he's a wonderful person. But is he the right person? And that's all that matters, because it's a long-term commitment. We just don't walk in the door and it's automatic. Nothing's automatic in that type of a field.
Is there, furthering the conversation, is there an interim period of time that you're comfortable with?
Yeah, if we're expanding this for a couple more months, and Al has to take his leave, and, I don't know, six months? Three months? Something temporary until we know that we have searched every possible choice prior to just move him up, move him up. That's, that's short. It's not necessarily doing the best for our board and our community. That's just my opinion. And, you know, I'm sticking with it. I don't know what Commissioner Pennington's thoughts were and where her thought process is. She's been here two, two years, I think? Two years, maybe? And, you know, like I said, I've done a lot of dealings with Sean, and there's things that I like about him, and there's things that I'm concerned about. So I am allowed to have those feelings too, when I've spent the time. And that's all. Doesn't make him bad. Doesn't make him wrong.
I'm just trying to get to the next step, so trying to.
Well, that's up to the board, not just to Pam.
No, I understand, but we have to have a consensus of the four of us to move forward.
Of course. Right. Okay.
Chair, just to provide back the feedback, Commissioner Pennington's feedback was to keep it open, and she was not wanting to rank any of the current candidates as they are today. That was her position.
I'll go, I will, I'll consider interim so that Al can leave with some sort of peace. But I want to keep it open, and I want some other strategies. I mean, if, I want a recruiter. I mean, I think it's very obvious I want a recruiter, but it's very obviously nobody else does. So I just want a list of other strategies that maybe they can Google recruitment and see what it's going to take. I get, I get the idea of not having enough openings or not having a lot of vacancies. It happens a lot when people are in government. Government, let's face it, is a pretty, pretty good gig. So when you're in those spots, they don't leave often. So we've got a retirement happening. Wish that we would have planned for it a little bit earlier, but we didn't. So I'm, I, I do not like the word interim. I'll just be totally honest on that. I do not like the word interim. So I'll do a short-term interim, but it's not, it's something that we can't keep kicking and calling them interim. It's either in or not. But if we don't get any other candidates, you know, I've got a couple of people I would talk to, but if nobody else has them, then we don't have them.
Mr. Hadeed, you're, the date you listed again for your retirement date?
August 1st.
If we, I do think if you do the interim, we would need to do it so that Sean has that authority to be able to, to work his magic, work his own personality into the office. And it would need to extend beyond Mr. Hadeed's termination date. And we can bring this.
It wouldn't even start until his termination date.
Correct.
Okay, all right.
But there is that, I think there's that psychological boost that will come from that, naming it ahead of time.
So when you're in the postal service, you're hired, you have a 90-day probation period. That seems to be a governmental timeframe. You have 90 days to perform in a position. Now, that's the only form of reference I have on that, but I don't think that's uncommon. There's probably some legal law to that as well. So when I think of an interim, I would think you would, I don't know, I think you would start it, you know?
January 1?
No, no. August 1 for 30, for 90 days. That would be the interim period while we're still searching from today on, until we have enough candidates that we can add them to it and then proceed with, that gives us time to hire somebody, not three weeks. Doesn't work that easy.
So you're saying December 1 would be the next, would be 90 days?
I didn't count the 90 days yet. August to September, October, November.
November 1.
One thing to keep in mind.
The month of August, the month of September, and the month of October. Right, November 1st.
Well, one thing to keep in mind, commissioners, is that if, keeping it open for a very long period of time, some of the candidates might be applying to multiple positions, and you might lose those people. So you're not going to keep that same, you know, roster of folks interested if it's open a very long period of time.
And you might get a whole bunch of new people, and none of us have gotten jumping for joy for any of these right now. So I'm not, there's no fear of loss in here. There's a pressure to gain, not loss, in my opinion.
But I just wanted to mention, we might lose some of the candidates today as the process goes on. It's just giving you that data point.
Well, I think if you're, if what I'm hearing is if you, if you go the interim route, losing these candidates is not the concern.
That's what I'm hearing.
But it could be, I mean, you'll have to evaluate candidates as they come in, is the.
Yeah, we'll keep the process as we've been having it today. As candidates are meeting minimum requirements, we'll go ahead and push them out to the commissioners, and when you're ready, you can tell us, I have enough. We just, we just call, you know, kick the process into motion again.
Is there consensus on Commissioner Richardson's 90-day plan?
Well, what do we, we're going to give Sean, we're going to give him a title for 30, 90 days.
He would be interim's county attorney for 90 days after Al retires.
I can live with that. Not happy, but I can live with that.
Did you have an alternate?
Yeah, make him the county attorney.
Okay. I don't think you'll get consensus on that, so.
No, neither do I.
Right.
It's just my opinion.
All right, so I'll need a yay on the consensus for the Richardson plan. I'm fine.
I'm fine.
Okay, so I.
It sounds, I'm the only one on the mic right now, so we're all in consensus of it. I'm assuming so.
Yes, I want to verbalize consensus moving forward.
Thank you. No, I mean, except for.
Greg said, say.
Yeah, I'm good.
Yes, I'm yes.
I'm good for it.
And, okay.
So to make sure I understand the direction, you're naming, as I heard the consensus, naming Sean Moylan the interim after August 1st for 90 days.
Right.
In the meantime, we're going to go ahead and start, keep the recruitment open, and continue to provide the board candidates that qualify. And when you're ready, you can let us know, and then we'll go ahead and stop, close the recruitment, and kick in the process that we had in place. In the meantime, we'll try to find other alternatives to promote and market the position to see if we can attract other candidates. Is that, is that the direction?
That's the compromise, it appears.
Yeah, and what, just in addition to that, what if we gave him, each of us gave him names of current have that we would like to interview, and I guarantee you, we don't each have five. But that would kind of give HR kind of the thought process of what we're looking for, because I bet you, I bet you we're pretty close on if we gave, each gave him two names or three names or four names or something. I bet we'd be pretty close. But.
If you want to do that.
That's just a thought.
Well, let's put this out to public comment. Let's open it up for public comment. So if anybody wants to chime in on this discussion, county attorney discussion, Mr. Long.
It's Ron Long, Auto Drive. The biggest thing I'm taking away from this is we're getting a lot of applicants that are subpar to what Sean currently is. It almost sounds like Commissioner Hanson said, let's put Sean in the position and hire for his job. Because other than that, what I'm kind of getting from some members on the board is that if you come into work at the county with the goal of furthering and growing a career and expanding, you know, growing in the position, that won't happen, because Sean's been here like 10 years. He knows this. You're going to bring in somebody else who's got to learn our county. Have that person be a subordinate to Sean, and let them learn the county from Sean, kind of the way Sean learned it from Al. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
I would say in counter that, I think the dynamic is two brand-new commissioners don't have the same working experience as some of us that have been on for at least a term, and I fully understand their thought process in that, and respect that they, you know, that this is kind of their compromise as well. But, yes.
I'm not here for this today, but now that I sat here and listened to this, 90 days is for a kennel help, a receptionist, those kind of things. That's the law, 90 days they have. To have a city attorney only have 90 days to prove himself, that's not a long enough time. And even if it were, you can't ask someone to move probably their family, their children, everything, in the middle of a school year. If you're going to be that far close, it should be January 1st. So if someone does have to move their family, it gives them time to settle, to find a place to live, and their kids to come out of school, if that's the case.
Our interim is, lives here, or the deputy lives here.
Yes, but anyone you decide to bring in, they're going to be, if they have a family, January 1st would be it.
Right. Usually, they'll tell us when they can get here.
George Maco, resident of the county. The only thing I want to say as I sit here is I think headhunter firms provide a very valuable assistance, and I believe they are well worth the investment. So I think for the county not to consider a headhunting firm that specializes, they're missing an opportunity, and it would be a very good investment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Commissioners. Kate Komisky, I'm in the hammock, like my neighbor here. I didn't come here for this discussion, but I feel that I have to speak. I'm not suggesting that Sean Moylan get the position just because he's already in position. I suggest that he get the position because he's experienced. I've had, I've had times to interact with him. Commissioner Hanson, I had a meeting with you when Sean was there. He knew the history of when the City of Palm Coast Councilwoman raised the topic of annexing part of the unincorporated area of Flagler County, and he explained the legal case that had happened. He followed up with me. He actually sent me the documents so that I had that background information. That also touches on what Mr. Hadeed said about having the history of this county and what our critical issues are, the institutional knowledge. He has that, and he's had years of osmosis with Mr. Hadeed to learn a lot about Flagler County. So I think you would be giving discredit to entertaining other candidates that don't have that institutional knowledge. The other, the other thing that I would say is I attended a presentation in Flagler Beach about the Veranda Bay possibly annexing that, Sean spoke it there, and I didn't interact with him. He doesn't even know that I'm actually up here advocating for him, except that he's in the room. But I genuinely do believe that he is qualified. He's professional. He represented Flagler County really well at that meeting, and I think he has the knowledge and the capability to lead that legal office. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next public speaker. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Richard Duvall. I'm one of the applicants. It seems as though at least some of the board has a clear opinion of where they want to go. I'm not here to try and change your mind. I had organized some thoughts to share with you, the number of trials I've had, jury trials, municipal jury trials, the number of appeals I've had on behalf of municipalities that I've, that I drafted the appellate, the brief, argued the brief, and won the appellate level. I'm not here to talk about that. I want to correct a couple of things on the record. My ego is deflated, since I'm not a rock star.
My apologies.
That's quite all right, but I will say, I've got, I am a professional violinist, and I can make a, I can play a waltz that makes a pile of stone cry. And I don't think it's fair to use the phrase "subpar." Now, subpar means, as we know, it's a golf term, meaning there's the score that a pro would get. And then those who fall less than a pro are subpar. I may not be the right fit for you. I accept that. But I have spent my career being a people person. I can work with boards. I've been a prosecutor. I've been a state legislative assistant, and I've drafted laws that became, that became state laws. I've represented elected officials, election officials. I have a vast experience involving town law, election law, city of, city, city law. But I respect this board's opinion going forward as to who they're comfortable with. And I understand their reluctance to endorse anybody, whether they know them personally or they don't know them at all. This is the first time I've had a chance to chat with you. A little nervous. But I do take a little bit of umbrage of being described as subpar. My mother sacrificed to put me through law school. I was the first person in our family to get a college degree. I'm a people person, but when it comes to a fight, like in litigation, I'm second to none. And that's from New York State, where I've bumped heads against the best. So with that, I wish you all the very best of luck in your future endeavors. I think you risk losing people that you might want. I think you risk marginalizing those that might be acceptable to you, but I respect your decision, and I thank you for your time again.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for applying, and thank you for speaking. Any other public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais. Do you have enough information from us, Ms. Justlin? Do you have enough information from us, Ms. Justlinus?
Yes, sir, so we're not ranking anything today, we're just gonna post, we're gonna have Sean be the interim, starting on August first, up to ninety days of January first, I believe it is. We'll have to come back with some kind of interim contract for Sean.
Right.
So we'll work on that with HR. Any interim has to have a contract, the same way you have with a, a person in that position, because it's a position reporting to you.
Would you say January first or October first?
No, from August first to January first is what I heard.
November first.
November first.
So from August.
Thirty, it was the ninety days that.
So August to November first.
The consensus was for ninety days.
Ninety days, okay, from August first to November first, ninety days. So we'll do that, and then we'll continue to, we'll leave it open for the same period of time. And if you have enough candidates that you would like us to come back, just let Charlie know and we'll bring those candidates back. We'll continue to push information out as people are qualified, that meet the minimum requirement as specified by the board, so those will be provided to you. And we'll reignite the process once we receive guidance from the board.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody need a break? Nope, all good, okay. Let me put this aside. Okay, next item on the agenda is our discussion on beach funding and budget. Ms. Petito.
Let us take a minute while we load the presentation. Good afternoon, thank you all for being here, this discussion was postponed from last week, but it serves as a follow-up to our continued discussion regarding our budget guidance and specifically as it relates to funding options for our fiscal year twenty-six budget. A key focus today will be centered on gathering some board policy guidance and a path forward for the beach management plan. I look forward to your input and direction as we work to align funding strategies with board priorities. This is a look at the agenda for today's budget and beach discussions, I'm gonna go over each one of these in a little bit more detail.
Can I ask a question, please?
Sure.
This was supposed to be on the May nineteenth meeting, right? This was supposed to be the workshop for May nineteenth?
I'd have to look at a calendar, it was our last meeting where we were missing two members, I believe.
The backup, or this presentation, did not hit the internet until I was on vacation over the weekend. Do you know why, if it was supposed to be on the nineteenth, it didn't hit until this weekend?
Typically, presentations are worked on up through the weekend, we don't advertise.
No, you're supposed to be, we were supposed to have this on the nineteenth. Why couldn't we just click a button and send this presentation that day?
Because it wasn't complete, and we knew we weren't gonna have the meeting, we knew in advance of Monday's meeting that we did not have enough staff member, or board members to be present, therefore, we did not complete the presentation because it wasn't going to be presented, all of the workshop items were canceled that day and then brought back to today. Similar to the attorney presentation that was also still being worked on. Unfortunately, we don't have the luxury of having a, a deep staff, so a lot of these presentations, Jorge and I work on these together, in addition to, you know, running the county. So when we know that we're not gonna have that meeting that day, then our direction and our focus is placed on other things. So this was actually completed while I was on vacation last week, I worked on it while I was home. So as we start to build our twenty-six budget, we're using the guidance that we received from the board back at our February tenth meeting. Based on property valuation and new construction estimates that we received from the property appraiser, we anticipate seeing an increase of nine point five seven percent over last year's values. So what this equates to is an anticipated increase of approximately six point one million, that would be in the board's side of the budget. To support the current level of operation within the board's budget, we would need between four to five percent, or roughly, this would be about three million dollars, which would include any increases in cost of living for personnel, our health insurance, our Florida retirement, workers' comp, general liability insurance, and any other business operational costs. It's pretty standard what we've been seeing, it's been that trend for the last probably six years or more, that it runs somewhere about four to five percent, just to keep up with those costs. So in looking at the budget or what we anticipate, that leaves you about another four to five percent remaining that would be available to fund, whether it's decision units, new capital, or program needs. So roughly, we've got about three million, I know we talked about pledging some of that to the beach for next year, so that would impact that bottom line of three million, so.
Next question, next question, could you go up to point number two? Approximately six point one million, nine point five seven percent is twelve million dollars. Is it a requirement, a law, a statute, that the board only keeps half of it?
It's neither of those, I think what it's been is historical, I think what we showed you during your one-on-one that took place last week, what we showed you was the breakdown, I didn't want to repeat a lot of the same information that I had given you previously.
I think the general public might want to know some of it, so that's why I ask.
Well, I can certainly pull that back up if that's what you would like to see. When we talked last week and we looked at the, during the one-on-one discussions, what we were experiencing with that was an increase of, let me pull it up real quick on my screen. What we were looking at, that increase in revenue would be about twelve million dollars. Typically, the way the budget split up, you, you supply funding to your constitutional officers, your constitutional officers are a little bit more than fifty percent of the total budget. With the understanding that they're gonna have the same needs in the way of cost of living adjustments, healthcare, Florida retirement, workers' comp, contracted increases, it would be safe to assume that they're also gonna have that same four to five percent increase. So their needs are gonna go up, just as much as we know ours are gonna go up. We've had some preliminary conversations with the constitutionals as far as their needs, and where they're, where they think they're gonna have some additional asks. So when we were looking at the budget and what we did during the one-on-ones was show you that the total revenue was gonna go up, twelve point four million, of that, six point two would end up going to the constitutionals. We say going to the constitutionals, we don't want to assume that, and what I had said last week was that we don't know how much of it's gonna be unused or not needed in their budgets, because their budgets are not due to us until June first. So I don't want to assume that there's gonna be funding out there available to us, this is part of the budget process, there's a lot of unknown variables that as we continue to fine-tune the budget, we work towards closing that gap. So I can only work with the parameters that I know today, and typically, we don't count more than whatever our, we'll call it fair share, or allocation that we would intend to see come to us. So we base it by pro-rata share, whatever that growth is, we kind of hold it in pro-rata, so that's why we got to the amount here, that second bullet, where you're seeing the six point one. Your constitutional officers would get six point two five five, you'd have six point one five six available to the board if things were distributed as they were last year. Lot of assumptions, that's why this is a moving target, as with a lot of the budget preparation that we have. So I don't know if that answers the, the question for you, but. So as we look to work on the budget, again, that leaves four to five percent, roughly three million, available to fund decision units, capital, program needs, which also include the beach. So just to take a look at the budget, I mentioned this to you previously at multiple occasions. Administration, along with your financial services team, conducts budget meetings with our department heads to review their respective budgets and any new departmental needs. These are provided to us in the way of decision units, this is for anything new. When we start the budget, it's like zero-based budget, you're looking at what you had previously, not adding anything, putting it forward in a decision unit. We received fifty-two new decision units within the general fund for your Board of County Commission departments. When you look at that cost within the general fund, the needs were four point eight million. So most of the need, about eighty-one percent requested, were for personnel. It's not really a shock, because the bulk of what we do is personnel costs. So when we were looking at this, that leaves about nine percent that they were asking for, just under a million dollars, that was being requested for tools, software, or new equipment. So when we're looking at prioritizing the needs of the organization, we're proposing right now to fund about one point nine of the four point eight million dollar ask. This equates to about forty percent of what the overall organizational needs were, and this supports largely public safety, and I can go over these in a little bit more detail. When we look at the proposed staffing, that one point nine million, and looking at what does that come down to? So when we dive into the details, the largest portion is for fire rescue. So if we were to allocate one point five million over to fire rescue, that would give them sixteen new positions. Nine of those positions are needed for staffing of Rescue Twenty-Five. This is a unit that was placed in service in Palm Coast, right there at the Southern Rec Center location on Belt Air. We, due to the severe call volume in Palm Coast, you had unmanageable call volume of two stations. We decided last year to step up a unit at Twenty-Five to kind of move the call volume around between ninety-two, Twenty-Five, and I think the other station was Twenty-One up in Palm Coast. We did not add the staff, because it was a mid-year decision to step up another unit to see if it would help offset some of the mandatory overtime that we were experiencing. So the ask now is to staff it with people rather than overtime, because we have crews that are being burned out, that don't have good work-life-family balance. So that's largely nine people would be needed for that, and then there's also a need for an additional six people, which are needed for coverage for sick and relief. As I mentioned, Station Twenty-Five, Rescue Twenty-Five, was being covered with overtime. So when you look at the cost of overtime at about, you know, just under a million dollars, the net increase of funding this would be about five hundred thousand dollars. But it does create a better work-life-family balance, if you look at a normal employee, they work forty hours a week. Your firefighters currently work fifty-six hours a week. If they get one shift of mandatory overtime, they're now working eighty hours a week, and that happens on a regular basis, so there's a lot of burnout, there's a lot of challenges that we're working with this department, so there's definitely a need. I saw an email exchange just this morning that the federal government is releasing some additional SAFER grant funding that's for firefighters. Fire chief would like to move forward with submitting a grant request that helps cover the expense of salaries and benefits of firefighters that are added. I support that, and hopefully the board will support that at a future agenda. It definitely helps cover the initial cost for the first few years, if we are successful in getting that grant. Then when we looked at another public safety need, this one is within IT, but it's helped support radio and CAD. And that radio and CAD is used for fire rescue as well as law enforcement. This position is not a hundred percent funded out of the general fund, it is split between E-nine-one-one and the radio. So only forty percent of the cost, forty percent of ninety-two thousand, would end up being covered by general fund, so that's another one that I would recommend supporting. And then the other one would be the remaining funding needed to cover six library positions, and this is gonna be needed to staff your new Nexus Center, your new facility located in Bonnell. So that kind of rounds out the one point nine million. As I mentioned last week, when I met with some of you, or all of you, some of the administrative budget suggestions that we are looking at through the budget process and through our presentations to the board, we offer suggestions that are designed to provide the board with options, these are not decisions. The board will then exercise its policy authority to approve, modify, or reject our recommendations, or my recommendations. So here's a list of some of the things that we've identified within our budget development. One of the things that we were looking at is reducing the capital expense for next year by delaying or deferring some of the equipment and capital. By doing that, it would free up about two million dollars that could be used in another area. We are looking and evaluating vacant positions, whether they're being frozen or eliminated altogether. We do propose that we need to have a new beach management MSBU, whether it's for the entire beach or the northern unincorporated section. We will be coming back to you to propose some fee increases with Parks and Recreation to make sure that we're capturing the amount of money that we should be capturing for the use of those public facilities. We are looking at proposing creation or reclassification of positions to meet service demand, and we are suggesting organizational restructuring for efficiency or cost savings. And then we will be recommending funding increases or reductions based on performance data or outcome metrics. So that's some of the stuff that we're working on, it's within the purview of county administration, but there are things that I need help with, where I need policy guidance from the board. So through our one-on-one discussions, I am seeking some policy guidance as it relates to adopting a more strategic, performance-driven approach to community funding and infrastructure investment. So these items include transition from some of these longstanding legacy programs, and maybe moving funding to competitive grant, where it is based on performance with the funding approach. So kind of like what we're looking for is maybe direction to staff to develop a phased transition plan, which would end some of the automatic funding of some of the programs that we would then return to the board with a proposed program guideline, it would include a grant application, and really coming up with some nonprofit funding policy grant program that we would look to the board to implement, and then basically, it would require these programs to be prioritized based on performance-based outcomes. So like when we talked, and we talked about some of the longstanding grants that the county gives out, it's kind of like, I don't want to call it a, a free handout, but it's almost like it becomes an entitlement year after year where they're getting the same amount of money. And you'll see it, it's a transition that we've recently made in tourism into the art league, where it's now gonna be more of a competitively-based program, where you're now competing, you're having to apply, I think this would give us an opportunity to really transition some of this funding over to that competitive grant. We also talked about possibility of doing some of this with some of the senior programs that we have. I think it's a good way to really start transitioning to those programs. And then the last one there is really looking for guidance on funding for the beach management plan implementation. So earlier today, I don't know if you saw it in your email, but the county attorney had emailed you a draft ordinance related to the potential revenue source in support of a beach management plan. A copy of the email and the ordinance should be at your seat up there, if you don't have it, let me know. But that ordinance would serve as the foundation of an interlocal agreement with the cities, should the board decide to move forward with that option. But staff is seeking guidance from the board in establishing funding for the beach management plan. These are the three options that we had for consideration, I can go over each one in a little bit more detail and just kind of lay out what each effect would have.
Heidi, can I stop you for a second?
Sure.
Because you're really rolling on here. On the five, the one prior to this. Right, thank you. The legacy program, maybe you can give us some examples of what grants you're talking about, the amounts and what the total is? If that's what we're cutting, if we're able to cut that or whatever, how much, you know, what, what it amounts to?
I'm not proposing a cut, what I'm proposing is a transition from some of those longstanding programs. So when we met during the one-on-ones, I think we were looking at roughly about eight hundred and twenty-five thousand that runs through HHS. Some of that is not things that you could necessarily cut, some of it's indigent healthcare, some of it's indigent burial. Those things you're still gonna have to fund, but it was programs where you're providing funding to entities that provide a service within the community. It's not competitively sought, it's kind of just a annual allocation that you're giving them. It would be. It would be transitioning, coming up with a plan to transition that, to not have it be where it's just a guaranteed entitlement every year. It would be competitively, you as a board through your policy would establish a nonprofit funding grant with an application. You would have metrics, it would be performance-based.
Put it in a grant situation, right.
But we would have to, as staff, work on what that plan looks like, come back to the board with a transition plan, come back with that nonprofit funding policy, the application, and we would have to notify these entities so that we're not cutting them off today or even in fiscal year '26, but starting to lay the groundwork of how we transition them over time.
Thank you.
Yep.
I think in what I had when Ms. Matino and I were talking about this is the entities themselves have to be a little more proactive. It's not just a handout, but it is a kind of a, allows us in the community to see the ROI. What is, what are our investments in them providing to the community? And so, a little bit more detail, and I also, you know, all those other entities are going through the budget process right now relying on those funds continuing, so I think it'd be hard to, it would, I don't want to use the word fair, but it would be hard on them as well to see changes during this fiscal year, but we can get this process in place for next year and then further evaluate those funds that are going to those groups.
The only problem I have with that is you're assuming that we're, if we're going to do that process, then some of these individuals are not going to get funded. And I can't agree with that. Those, I agree that we can't look at them as handouts, but these are organizations within the county that provide a terrific service to people that really need the help. So, we're going to force them to be, compete against each other for the limited dollars that we have, and then one or two or three of these institutions are not going to get funded, and that's, that's, that's hard for me to swallow.
Well, I think we need to look at, one of the, one of the organizations has a $90,000 grant from the state already. If they're prepared to apply for a grant, then they have to disclose certain information on productivity, profitability. If it's a 501(c)(3), we have to make sure they meet the requirements. Nothing is being done right now. So, if you look at the budget, in October 1st, 90% of these organizations had a check cut to them on October 1st. So, I think what we're asking for is a more transparent, a more proactive program, or what we're going to call a competitive grant, then we can budget, we can budget what we need based on the, whether or not the program, you know, we're representing taxpayer dollars. So, if we're not, just like with the Humane Society, if we're not actively seeking the information that should be sought, then shame on us, and it's our job to do that. So, this competitive grant is no different than what, like Heidi said, it's no different than what we did in the TDC. And they will, again, you're right, Commissioner Hanson, they'll have to skip a year of funding or it doesn't mean they're totally defunded. They're, they're applying for these monies from lots of other sources. So, it's our duty to make this program a little bit less of a handout.
Any other questions?
Just a comment from what's been said. There has to be a measurement of responsibility for any organization to be responsible for what they do, right? And they're asking for help, but not, we're not running those organizations. They have boards and they have other people. That's what the purpose is for fundraising and doing certain things to keep an organization going, but as long as you're being fed, you're not going to go out and go to work for it. So, I think it's very important that we review where those funds are going and see, I want to see the result of our contribution. You know, you can walk up to any group and throw your clothes at them, and you don't ask them, who's getting those clothes? Maybe I could give it to them. It's just the part of the charitable part of it, and it's wonderful to be charitable, but it has to be accountable. And that's, that's my concern, is that these runaway numbers just keep going and going and are, is there any accountability, and are we holding their feet to the fire of accountability? That's, and sometimes it happens, and sometimes it gets by, but if it becomes continual, then we're just throwing money, you know, good money after bad money, and that's when you sometimes have to look at, what are we doing? And I guess that's what we're staring at right now, and I'm thrilled to see us because, again, the legislature has not made their decisions. So, we have no idea. These are all numbers until they're reality, and we don't even know what the reality is going to be, and I'm very concerned about making any decisions until we see what the reality is. So, we don't know when that's going to happen. It's not today, that's for sure. So...
No, and I think the whole, to your point, the whole budget process, it's fluid, so things change. We don't know what the state's going to do. They're not any closer today than they were before. We don't know how that's going to impact state revenue and how that is coming to us. We don't know what they're doing with property tax. There's a lot of variables that we don't know, so all of this is just kind of building towards a consensus and direction from what does the board support and what do they want us to do because something's going to have to give, and we're going to have to find ways to reduce spending, and what does that look like? So, is there, you know, guidance from the board for staff to come back and develop a phased transition plan to go from being a, every October 1, they get a check cut versus having it be competitively put out there? Here's the process, here's when it gets awarded, here's, you know, reports that are due from them to us so that we can measure what those, what that looks like. So, if there is, at the end of this presentation, if there's direction from the board for staff to do that, we'll certainly start working on that. I already went over this slide, I believe, where we had the three different approaches, so we're going to go into each one a little bit more detail to talk about how that impacts. I don't know why this isn't advancing. So, looking at the option one, which is the current beach funding plan that we've been presenting, it's for the entire 18 miles. It does provide continuity of maintenance and nourishment. It does provide a uniform funding approach for the entire barrier island. It also includes the local match for any future Army Corps project in Flagler Beach. It does require interlocal agreements with all of the municipalities. It also requires the creation of additional revenue. This is where we had proposed the new half-cent sales tax, and then it would also need an MSBU put in place. When we did the initial estimate, it was about $160 per parcel on the entire barrier If you could advance to the next slide, it would be great. So, looking at option two, this would be the unincorporated beach only, so this would be the northern 10-plus miles. This would provide only the unincorporated area with maintenance and nourishment, so it would only be providing funding within that unincorporated beach area. It still requires additional revenue in the way of an MSBU. It would need to be recalculated, so it will likely be more than the $160 per parcel. I think when we looked at it over a year ago, it was somewhere between, I think it was starting out on the low end, maybe 300, upwards of $2,000 depending on the property. It does utilize a large portion of the existing half-cent sales tax, which takes it out of consideration to be used for roads or stormwater or other capital needs. And then, we would have to look at updating the construction plans for this area. We would have to modify any funding for construction and nourishment. And then, there we go. Option three is that alternative reactive approach, basically no maintenance or nourishment, no funding would be established for that one, which really just brings us back to the three. Next slide, where we're looking to get consensus from the board on what option would they like us to pursue. You have a copy of the draft ordinance in front of you if that is something you would like us to move forward with as the foundation of an interlocal agreement for the cities.
I have heard from Palm Coast, and I know Flagler Beach also wants to, even though they don't get to keep any of the money, Palm Coast does keep a portion of their share, and they, they indicated they did want to see the ILA come to them so that they had an opportunity to publicly discuss impacts to the city of Palm Coast specifically. So, I know we had, we were going that plan, then we held off, so I think, I'd like to know if there's consensus for us to get that to Palm Coast to a workshop so they can talk about that publicly and how that impacts them. They, I think, from what I heard, they wanted to have that on, you know, on the record to talk about.
Interlocal would only pertain to the half-cent in Palm Coast because the MSBU would not impact Palm Coast.
Right. Right.
And that would be a new tax, right?
Correct.
So, that's really where we are, just looking for consensus moving forward. There's still a great deal of work to be done with the interlocal and meeting with the municipalities, and then even, you know, direction to staff on unwinding some of those legacy expenditures and moving them more towards that grant, competitive grant program.
So, is there consensus to send the ILA to the city of Palm Coast?
No.
If, I guess at this, at this point, do we, is it okay with anybody? We'll open it up for a public comment. So, anything either budget or beach-related, we'll open it up for public comment.
Greg Davis-Hammock Dunes Association with no notes. I apologize for my voice. Regarding beach management, I'll go back to the position we've taken all along. Something has to be done, period. We are Hammock Dunes Owners Association. We are approaching $8 million into this thing so far, and we cannot wait any longer. We absolutely cannot wait any longer. I understand that there's some tough decisions that have to be made, but that's what you're there for. But we can't wait. We absolutely cannot wait, and we absolutely cannot fund anything else out of our HOA. Just can't do it. We've kind of hit the wall on that. So, I think you understand your options. I think you need to come together on one of those options, and we need to move forward now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
In most water, I live in a hammock. I think that one of the things that's not been placed front and center is that when I first moved here and I said, "Do you have any hurricanes?" The answer was, "No." They hadn't had any hurricanes. But in the 22 years I've been here, they've had hurricanes, and they say, "Oh, that was a bad one, but that's unusual, that's unusual." It's not unusual anymore. So, if there's going to be beach, doing that, you have to have money every year that starts to pile up so when you have that big seven-year do everything, that you have the money for it. You've heard speakers that came in to talk about wanting to be on this board, and they talked about how wonderful this area is, how great the beaches are. I'm floored that everything's free. Everything's free. You want to go to the beach, you want to go to the walking trails, you want to go to the dirt bike trails, wherever you want to go, it's free. So, it seems to me that part of the responsibility for you, our commissioners, is to realize this is going to be every year. Every year, you're going to have to put money away so that when that seven years comes, you're not doing what you're doing now and, you know, throwing pins up into the air. And that's why I think the 1.5% sales tax makes sense. It is a new, ongoing thing that the county hasn't had to account for. But when you started to say, "We need a beach management plan. We can't do this. It'll be okay next year, it won't be so bad," that doesn't take care of what needs to be done. So, I think that that is the fairest way. And if you're looking to bring in new industry and new people and you have more money, then that 1.5% tax rate will really help you so that you can incorporate it in your budget every year. This is how much money we need to have sitting aside to do this project that every seven years costs a lot, a lot, a lot of money. And that's what I think would be the fairest thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
I live in the Painters Hill area on the ocean. Your inaction for the last seven years since Matthew, eight years, nine years, in terms of establishing local funding, has caused 49 houses in the unincorporated areas from Barn Park to Beverly Beach. 49 properties have built seawalls at their own expense that would not have been necessary if the beach had been re-nourished under a beach management plan. But because nothing's been done, 49 properties have, at their own expense, protected their The protection that the seawalls give isn't magic. The seawalls won't last forever. The seawalls need the nourishment project in front of them. The environmental disaster of not taking care of the dune, the beach, and the seabed is going to compound into bigger problems in Painters Hill, bigger problems in Hammock Dunes, bigger problems in Ocean Hammock, bigger problems at Hammock Beach, bigger problems north of there. You got to do something. If it's not, if it's not the half-cent sales tax and the 18-mile plan, then you've got to start putting together local funding for the unincorporated area. I prefer the 18-mile plan, but do something. The next few years are going to see more seawalls. More of my neighbors are going to have to, at their own expense, in lieu of a beach management, beach nourishment project, build a seawall. I'm worried about my seawall surviving. I'm worried about my seawall surviving. The exposure under, it's a 16-foot NAVD top of wall, 14 feet bottom of concrete. The DEP only allowed a 50-year seawall to be built. It's not a 100-year wall like the SeaCat seawall. It's a 50-year wall. There's six feet of panel exposed underneath. There's only eight feet of panel in the ground. It's not impossible for some of these seawalls to be destroyed without beach nourishment. We've done what we could to protect ourselves. We need your help.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is William Jordan. I live in the hammock. I thank you for the opportunity. I was a little bit struck in the earlier discussion regarding the county attorney and the quest to hire an expert, headhunter outfit or whatever, to aid the county in that. And now, as we approach this, it struck me because we hired an expert, county tax dollars, last, or I think it was two years ago, to develop the beach management plan. One of the things the expert recommended was that, yes, we have a beach management plan, we implement it, and we share the funding throughout the county. It was supposed to be spread throughout the county. That was basically their recommendation. We have developed, you all have developed, staff has developed several plans, and we don't seem to be any further along. We're back to square one, where, yes, we need the beach management plan, but we don't know how to fund it. And I guess that's the stickler of everything. Nobody wants to pay for it. I live in the hammock. I don't have a problem paying my small fair share of the plan, but to be hit with everything, I find untenable. That was part of why I spoke during the MSBU presentation last fall, was because I could see that thing going, they're going to get the MSBU in place, they're not going to get anything else in place, and yes, it's a tool in the toolkit. It's the only tool in the toolkit, apparently, right now. And instead of looking at $160 per property, I believe the number that was said earlier, well, it could be anywhere from 300 to $2,000 per property. That's just, and we're going to be bearing the whole brunt. Apparently, we're the only funding implement in the county, other than the other, the portion of the sales tax, instead of the new sales tax. But I implore you to try to figure out a way to implement the beach management plan that was presented. Staff, I think, has done excellent work in presenting a plan that has several layers to it that helps share the pain across the entire county. Thank you for your time and efforts.
Thank you.
George Macklin, I live in the hammock, and the only thing I'm thinking as I sit there, I don't really look, I know Pam is saying, "No tax, no tax." I don't think it's a tax. I think it's an investment. It's an investment in property values. It's an investment in the future of our county. And if we do nothing, look at the alternative. So I think, again, it's not a tax, but a really important investment, and I think you ought to really consider it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ron Long, Auto Drive. I guess I'm the only person who lives out in the west. Everybody else is from the beach. And I'll tell you, as someone who lives out in the west, the majority of us don't care about the beach. We don't care about the beach. I haven't been to the beach in 15 years. I take that back. I go every Sunday for church, but as soon as my church moves into the Badcock Building, I won't be crossing over that bridge any longer. For me to pay an extra half-cent sales tax on top of the other things that I pay, because I'm already going to be paying for it, there's a portion of this coming out of already allocated property taxes, so I will be contributing what I consider my fair share. For me to pay any extra, no, no, I'm not going to. I'm sorry. I will stand here in front of everybody and say, "No, I have no interest in the beach. I don't care to fund it, and it does nothing to my property value." I know this is going to greatly increase y'all's property values, and with that being the case, maybe that's why you should be paying $2,000 for an MSBU. And that's all I'll say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Jim Olson, Ocean Hammock. Well, I've blown four hours of my afternoon, so I'm going to have my say. For the gentleman who doesn't, I understand he doesn't want to pay for the beach because he doesn't live near it. Now, the people who live on the beach happen to contribute a monstrous share of the, of the tax base of this county. Estimates are 30%. We don't send any kids to the schools, but we don't mind paying for all that stuff. So somebody takes the position, just because I don't benefit directly from that thing, I don't want to contribute to it, that's really poor. What I see is you're headed towards the option of doing nothing. Well, that's, that's, that's where it seems to be headed, because nobody seems to want to make a tough decision. And I thought, I thought you all said that doing nothing was not an option. Well, I don't see any movement. I've been coming to these workshops, every single one, all the county commission meetings, and you have to have the courage to act. I mean, that's your job. And I'm disappointed at what I'm seeing, and I hope you'll, somebody will have the gumption to do what's needed. And stop smirking, please. Yeah, okay. I've had my say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I live in the hammock. We've gone back and forth and back and forth with this, and it seems like we are getting nowhere. And I hear Commissioner Richardson and Commissioner Carney say, "No new taxes." Living in the hammock, I don't mind paying a half-cent tax for beach re-nourishment because it doesn't just help my property, it helps the whole county, because without the beaches, we have no tourism, and that's where a lot of our revenue comes from. With the MSBU, that's not called a tax. It's an assessment. So I guess what I don't understand is if we want no new taxes, it's okay to have an MSBU because that's called an assessment. It's not called a tax. And then those of us who happen to live in the unincorporated area, as Mr. Jordan said, would bear the whole brunt if we don't have the half-cent sales tax. Thank you for listening. Appreciate all the work you have done.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I really don't appreciate, Andy, that you asked for public comment before you completed enough discussion at the deus to give us something to come up and comment on. And we will continue to work, Steve and I. We're the ones that proposed the, whether in Tan MSBU, the unincorporated area, because we were fearful of the fact that the county would not act. The city of Flagler Beach did not act for 20 years. Had to be drug, kicked across the threshold screaming, never paid a cent yet. After 25 years, the Army Corps project was funded by FDOT and so forth, so the track record of this county participating in things that are necessary, it's, it's just pitiful. And so I would say to you, you don't have any time left anyway, so please stop the charade of going through this and taking your stubborn positions and saying, "Public, make some comments about what you should do." You don't have any choice. You only can do the unincorporated area. There's no time left. So if I can turn to the side and basically say, "We've said," just as I was the first person to say, "We've approved the emergency declaration 200 and some times." Stop doing the emergency declaration if you're not going to do anything. It's a charade. So what we will continue to do is you have to implement the unincorporated area for, hopefully, a one-year period of time. Please put your shoulders behind it for this next year, because you're not, there's no time left to go back to the cities, do all these things. So the point is, is that's the only path forward. We're going to get stuck on the barrier island with the MSBU for that year, but please bring something beyond that. If you don't do that, we're going to have to take this message to our state representatives and so forth, because this B O C C is not functioning for us. So that's the position that I am in. I will continue to work with every one of you to make that a success, but you are not providing any guidance to your staff today, and it's a sham. I'm sorry to have to say that.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. All right, see, none, I'll bring it back. I will just say that I, the decision to go back to public comment was to be able to at least offer the public's input before we decided on which way we're going. May not agree, that's okay. I'm just going to say a few words, I guess, in answer to some of these things. I think we've got, we're losing the opportunity to make a generational impact to preserve the beach, the beach community, and, and the characteristic of what makes Flagler County Flagler County. You heard why people moved here earlier, some very bright, smart people that chose Flagler County for a variety of reasons, and, and two of them, at the top was, was pretty much the character and, and the beach itself, living near the beach. So I mean, my only, my only question, if we're not doing the entire 18 miles of the beach nourishment, if we're not going to take the plan and run with it, if not now, We've got the plan, and we've got the ability to implement it. If not now, when is it going to happen? When are we going to, when are we going to be able to preserve the entire 18 miles? If not us, who? Are we going to punt it to the next commission in two years? Are we going to let somebody else? It's not my problem. I'll let somebody else deal with it. Those, we have to think about the timeline that's been presented to us. There's so many, so many important components tied to the decision to fund the beach maintenance plan. And incorporates, we're relying a lot, point's been made, we haven't spent hardly anything to maintain the beach up to this point, to get the nourishments done. That is not a sustainable plan. We cannot rely on the fact that we've, we've gotten all this grant money in the past, we're going to get it again. If we don't commit to funding, nobody is going to take us seriously, and, and none of that money is guaranteed. We talked, I'm pointing out you and Mr. Long, sorry. I get, I get from your position as a Westside resident, I think what we lose, this becomes an issue about the wealthy residents on the beach or near the beach, and that they, they can afford to, to pay this. I think, what we're coming to, what we're losing is the impact the beach has on the economy of Flagler County. Almost one in four jobs is related to tourism, which is, which is, the tourism engine is Flagler Beach and the beach. So all of those businesses and employees that, that are, make their living, feed their families, you have the impact of a half-penny sales tax, or the impact of losing the economic tourism engine, or losing, the potential of losing revenue from the expensive property values that are the beach. And it is a fact that the beach properties as a whole generate more revenue than we spend servicing them. It is, what allows that revenue stream allows us to do a lot more services in the rest of the county. And if not this plan, then when do we address the rest of our deficiencies in the county? This plan allows us to dedicate funds to the beach and the re-nourishment. If we're going to have a discussion, it appears now, on the unincorporated. Well, as Ms. Petito said, if we commit to doing the unincorporated plan, that commitment exhausts a lot of the revenue from our budget and pushes it to the beach at the expense of the Westside projects, at the expense of stormwater, at the expense of road construction of re-nourishment. It's, it's, those, there's a lot of, lot of things that come into play as we move on with the discussion if it's not now. If we don't do the plan now, then we're, appears we're going to have the discussion on, on the unincorporated and the effects of the unincorporated, because it has to be done now, because we're doing the budget. So if, if not now with the 18 miles, then the budget discussion is going to focus on shifting funds to the beach and the unincorporated part. It leaves the rest of the county, leaves Flagler Beach entirely vulnerable. They've got the benefit of the first nourishment project, but it will be a one-and-done. And are we going to shift this phase two now? Phase two, more than likely, gets shifted to the unincorporated, and that leaves the northern part of Flagler Beach unprotected. So that, that, if not now, then the residents of that second reach are affected, because that's not, more than likely, that is not going to happen. Why put that money in something you're not going to maintain? It's, it's unfortunate. I think we have missed an opportunity to, to be able to have said in the future, in the next 50 years, will this, will this be the moment? Will this be where, where we failed Flagler County? And, and I didn't want to be that one that said that. I was going to, I wanted to be part of something that solves a problem, but we're not, it appears we're not headed that way. And I'll give everybody an opportunity to also speak, because we are going to have to, to the commenter's point, we are going to have to give the staff direction. And once we give them the direction on which of those three paths we're going to, that will, that will severely affect everything else that you presented prior to that, and the budget changes. So this is why this has to be, discussion has to happen now, because we have to settle the rest of the budget. I just want to know, if we're not doing this now, when? And if it's not us, who?
So just a, just a little background. We knew, this board knew, three months ago, at least two, if not more, that in order to impose a half-cent sales tax on this county, you needed a four-to-one majority in order to do that. Several of us, and we met with Heidi privately, and we said, "No, we're not doing it. We're not doing it. Bring us other alternatives." The same spreadsheet that has been rotating through this board for the last year is still the same spreadsheet. When I say options, I'm not asking for you to move a half a cent from one spot to another spot. That's not an option. It's not an alternative. I am sitting here waiting for what is the best way to do this. A half-cent sales tax in this county right now is not going to solve this issue. We don't have four votes. We don't have Palm Coast. Without Palm Coast, 50%, 60%, 22%, whatever they're willing to give us is not going to make this plan, funding plan, work. I'm the one that sat up here and said, "No, no, no, Flagler I'm the one that sat up here and said, no, 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 Flagler Beach, you can't take all those tourism dollars and use it for unincorporated. You have to play fair. You have to get Flagler Beach involved. I'm not against a beach man, I wrote the beach management plan in Flagler Beach. I am opposed to the, the fact that I cannot get any other information out of this staff than a half cent sales tax, that they have been trying to get for the last four and a half years. You are overtaxing. Guys, believe me when I tell you, I have brought ideas, I have brought suggestions, I have looked at the budget, I have done everything I physically can do as an accountant to make sense of this funding plan, and I can't make sense of it. So I'm not voting for it. I have done everything in my spiritual, mental, physical being to understand this, and I can't understand it. And no one is trying to help me understand it. Because every time I say something, at least eight different times, I have been told, no. So somebody has got blinders on that this half cent sales tax is our saving grace, and it is not our saving grace. So you can get mad at me and Pam and LeAnn if you want because we won't support this half cent sales tax. It's bigger than a half cent sales tax. Trust me, it's bigger. So I'm not going to let it go anywhere. I'm just, you're right, I'm probably showing some, some stubbornness up here because now I realize I'm getting nothing that I want. I'm getting nothing. So I'm not voting for a half cent sales tax. I will do an S B, M S T U. We will keep it at the level it is. I am asking the staff for .25 M Ls, mils, not .11 mils. Because if so much of the mils is coming out of the hammock, give it back to them. Give it back to them. Figure out a way. You want six new employees for the library? Forget it. Forget it. Take two from Benell, take two from Palm Coast, and have Holly go back and be a librarian. You know what? I don't care how it works, you're not getting six new employees. And all these other things that we looked at last week, we had numbers next to them. I don't see any numbers here today. I don't, I'll give you the whole half cent sales tax that we already have. Cut out the capital. I don't care how you, I, I have no alternatives, you don't understand. I have no alternatives in front of me. I keep getting the same half cent sales tax three months later after you know we don't have a four to one vote. Then you present me with an interlocal agreement. What is going on here?
I'm just going to make the comment I was going to call the question today, to just end it because I'm tired of hearing about it. Tired of being the no person. I'm not a no person. I'm a realistic person. We are building mountains of buildings and re-demodeling and refinishing. But hey, the beach is the most important part of Flagler County. But why isn't that money going there? That's my question. It's been my question since six months ago. I was supposed to get with Ainsley and try to figure out what we could do and learn a little more. I asked to see an overview of the 18 miles of beach that's destroyed currently. Still haven't had a response from that. You want action? I need to see reason. And I don't see reason. I'm not walking 18 miles of the beach with an upper respiratory serious infection. Thank you very much. But there was, there was radar that I could do it, and it's, it hasn't come to fruition yet. So here I am, sitting here now, getting out of my sick room and trying to work for all of us, the entire community, not just one section. And that's what I swore to do. But I'm also going to be as good steward of the monies. And to just keep asking people for handouts, we're giving handouts, and now we can't even keep them to take care of what is the most important thing in everyone's mind is the ocean. And there are weak spots. And I understand there's several weak spots, I've been notified about that. And those need to be shored up immediately. Where's that coming from? How is that being done when we're still talking about the entire 18 miles? There's weak areas. There could breach. I heard about breaching six months ago. Nothing has changed. Nothing has changed. We just need more tax. Well, I think we need to cut down on more spending. And Doge is coming. I believe that you've got paperwork from them now. So we're going to see cuts like you've never seen before. And I know it's coming. It's coming all over the place. And it's time that we have to respect that, and we have to do our due diligence. And it means losing some things. We're going to have to lose some things because you can't have everything on your plate all the time. And I'm just, that's all I'm going to say. I have no more comments, and I'm not snarky, I'm frustrated. I'm frustrated with the reality of what needs to be done and how it's going to get done properly and right, and with respect for everybody here. Because everybody deserves the respect. And I don't care where you live and who you are, we're all equal in my book. So I'm not snarky. I'm very much concerned about the residents who I speak and I meet with constituents every day that I'm not under the weather. And I talk to people every day, strangers, new people, finding out people come and found out how magical this place is. I wanted to stay. The beautiful place that we all came to, that's why we're here. The beach is important. But building $10 million buildings isn't, in my opinion, if the beach is crumbling. It's time to get real. And I'm not going to say anymore about it because that's all I have to say about it.
Mr. Hanson?
I'm afraid to open my mouth. I really am. This is, this is so negative on the county. And I agree with Andy, if not now, when? We're, we're making a decision here to do away with the Army Corps of Engineer project. It's, it's gone. If we don't renourish, provide Flagler Beach with the renourishment, then we have voided the contract with the Corps of Engineers. And they will not come back. We're trying to get them to come back and do some of the northern counties so we can save money there. They're not going to come back because we're going to void the contract with them on, for Flagler Beach. So, and that's the, if we do the northern 10 miles, that's what's going to happen. And as it pointed out, if we don't renourish Flagler Beach, the northern part of Flagler Beach and Painter's Hill, and protect the seawalls that was paid for out of somebody else's pocket, not ours, then we're going to lose more and more property. I, I think it's so short sighted to just say, flat say no to the half cent sales tax when we're talking about $14 a year for a family of four. That's about what it works out to be. And so it's not onerous, it's not, we're not killing anything. You know, if you read the rules, it doesn't apply to medical, doesn't apply to food, only applies to the first $5,000 of a major purchase. And 30% of it is played by, is paid for by tourists. I, I just, I have to be careful here. I don't want to pick on my fellow commissioners, but it's so short sighted. It's so short sighted to throw in the towel and say, we're not going to do it. We're just not going to do it. And, and that's what you're saying, you're, you're trying to contradict yourselves now, but that's what you're saying. We're not going to do it. If we do the, if we fund the northern 10 miles, we're throwing in the towel and saying, we're, we're just going to throw the beach to the wolves. We're going to do our best for the northern 10, but the rest of the beach is going to just go away. So Beverly Beach doesn't have enough money to do this. Flagler Beach doesn't have enough money to do this. So we need the whole county to pitch in and do this, not just the, not just the outer banks. And I would suggest that if you don't want to do the, the half cent sales tax, that we raise, we raise the ad valorem tax rate to get enough money to do the beach. So we're going to raise taxes either way you look at it. We're going to raise taxes. So...
But we can control that, Commissioner. We, we can't control Palm Coast and the, and the plan that's before us with the half cent sales tax.
Well then, I would ask Ms. Petito to give us a plan that raises our taxes, our ad valorem taxes enough to cover beach replenishment so that we can do all 18 miles.
After cutting, after cutting any vertical buildings, after cutting any increases in every department. You can't keep raising, Greg, and not cut. It's called tax and spend. You've got to evaluate every, every way we can, we don't even know what the cuts are because we, we're tying the beach, the beach project in with the budget. So that's, that's done intentionally. I think we can all see that. So what is the number? What is that number? So to get to a $4 million, we need a .25, a .25 mil given to the beach. Right? Reach two, by the way, is totally funded. The reason why we can't do reach two is we can't, we can't get the dredges here in 2025, so we're going to wait till 2026. There's just not, all four of us are, are on, at different levels with understanding where this plan is. I think that's the biggest problem. And then we need to send it out to 125,000 people. So that's another problem. 125, whatever, 36,000. The, the point is, you've got to cut. You've got to cut. There's also no mathematical, there's no mathematical, statistical, Army Corps, non-Army Corps evidence that pushing this plan out eight years instead of six, there's no evidence that we're hurting our funding plan by pushing it out to eight years instead of six years. There's 6 million right there. We are being presented with no alternatives. We are given the same math over and over and over again.
I think the, the one underlying problem is trying to find ways to fund a 12 million recurring problem, even if it's, and it's never been identified as a consistent funding. There's, this is an annual evaluation of the project, and there were even, you know, plans of shortening up the half cent so that it was time sensitive and not continuing and ongoing to meet needs. But it appears those are all past us. It's, the, always the big hurdle is the 12 billion in recurring funds, which, you know, I think admin knows that in order to make it work, you know, we are going to have to limit what we are going to be able to do in the funding plan. And I think, I think those became clear that we can't do everything that we want to do in the budget cycle. But, so the, the conversation at this point, everybody's had their say, is to, is to pivot and talk about what is next.
Well, the last meeting, we talked about putting out a referendum for a half cent. We're only a few months away, 2026 will be, but we can do a referendum in 2026. We've got a 2028 referendum that needs to renew. There are other options on this. It's just, they're not talking about them. That's, this is all we're talking about, is the right here and now. Do the MSBU, take out .25 of the, or .24, whatever you want to call it, out of the 2025 budget. Take the money from T D C. I also don't agree, and we, this has never come up, the T D C board did not give us 100% of Fund 1109. I think that was wrong. I, I would vote for 100% of point of 1109, 1111. What's the other thing? Take the current half cent sales tax revenue, take what, take whatever we can out of the 12 million or the supposedly 6 million that we're going to get this year without raising taxes, and spread it out eight years. Do some different math. You will get there. Somebody just has to put the pencil on the paper. And Flagler Beach goes, let them do, let them do a referendum to see if, if their people want an MSBU. We can show them how to do an MSBU. How about putting some skin in the game? How about taking your parking fees and putting it towards the beach? How about something? Nobody's coming to the table. We keep shifting this half cent sales tax around. Bring, bring something else. Obviously, that's not going to work. And trust me, it's not just not going to work at this county board of county commissioners. It's not going to work in other areas either.
All right, Ms. Petito, directions from us. What, what do you need for these next steps? Are we consistent that we need to pivot to fund unincorporated for the next year? I think when we have a full board back, we'll open up thoughts on referendum or other potential issues or, or actions.
I mean, we are building the budget, so it's important that we know what path the board wants to go. I know that when we met last week during the one-on-ones, we had explained how the current half cent is being utilized. There is a need for your roads. So what we were building into the budget is $4 million to cover the local portion of County Road 304. So pulling the entire half cent out and applying, it's probably not going to work. So I think if we can somehow build consensus on at least moving forward with the unincorporated so we can come back and show you what that looks like as we're building the budget, then certainly we can do that, regroup, if you put it out for referendum next year, whenever, never, whatever that looks like. But we as staff need to have some direction from the board on what is it that you don't want to fund? Because we cannot simply cut 12 million from a budget because you'd be taking roughly about 20% of the budget. It's going to be recurring, 12 million every year. That's the local match for the recurring. When, I just looked up the numbers again. You have the issue of the construction, which will have a gap in the northern part if we're not going to maintain it in northern Flagler Beach or Beverly Beach. I would suggest going back just with the money that's available there and shifting some of that expense to the unincorporated where you will have a maintenance plan. But I do want to just recap for consensus on option two. If we do go to the unincorporated, it will only provide funding in the unincorporated for maintenance and renourishment. So you will not have money for the Army Corps project renourishment in Flagler Beach. It's going to require that MSBU that we're going to have to recalculate. It will take a portion of the existing half cent. I'm going to have to come back and give that to you with an update on the construction plans because we are going to have to modify some of the funding for the construction and the renourishment. But I need to know what path so we can come back because it's a moving target, no matter which one of these you select. We have other challenges in the way of stormwater, roads, fire rescue, so that we're not dedicating everything to the beach, so...
I almost think you're going to have to give us some options of what, what you want. of what, what you want. Commissioner Carney, if you need to speak, speak, because this is...
That's, that's the whole point of this. Right? When they talk about decision, decision models, right? Right? Aren't we going to get decision models on what decisions, what the other options are, what the choices are?
Decision units.
Decision units, I'm sorry.
Those have already been, the admin has already, other than the two that she mentioned, she's already whittled away the decision units to just two things. One is fire, and what was the other one?
Yeah, public safety and library. So in public safety, it's fire, and then somebody in IT for radio and CAD.
So we have the, mainly the major portion is the fire. We need to decide if you're going to fund the additional fire units or continue to pay a million in overtime a year. Because those additional units and, and staff at fire rescue are to eliminate the burdensome costs that are tied to overtime right now.
And how much is the cost for 16 people for a year?
We can go back to the slide, but it's 1.5 million.
And how much of 1.5 million will help the beach?
None of it. This is decision unit that we're looking at, different variables. You'd have to make cuts into your programs and your personnel. So you'd have to look at laying off positions that are not public safety, reducing hours of operation, or picking what it is that we currently do that you don't want to do anymore because it has to be recurring. So like even the use of the TDC funds, that money that they have sitting there, that's a one-time allocation of fund. It's not that every year, TDC is going to have 10 million sitting there. They've accumulated it over many years. So it's not that you can just take it and it's going to be replenished. So you need to find recurring funding. And it goes to the constitutionals as well because when we had the guidance from the board on February 10th, there were, there was no discussion about cutting expenditures. And now your constitutional budgets are going to be due June 1st, and they're not built with any cuts.
So whatever the constitutional wants they get.
Not necessarily. You have two constitutionals, the tax collector and the property appraiser that are fee-based. Therefore, you really don't dictate their budget to them. That leaves three. That leaves the supervisor of elections, your clerk of court, and your sheriff. I've presented to them the same information about the contact that we had with DOGE about supplying the information. We're on a deadline to supply it by June 6th. Internally with staff, we've, you know, started the process of gathering the board's records. But the constitutionals also have to provide their documentation to us.
I mean, I think we...
And I left my meeting with, with my one-on-one with Heidi thinking that this half cent is not going to solve our problems. It truly is not going to solve. 4.7 million, that's, that's meaning that Palm Coast gives up their 50%. We got much bigger problems than $4 million. So we can't cram all this into one box and, and hope everything falls out of it. It, it's a big, it's been building up for years. This isn't just, uh, this isn't just a 2026 issue. So yes, we are going to have to cut. And yes, maybe we only get eight firefighters, you know? I don't know. Why are we making this decision? Why isn't it presented to us already decided?
I think, I think it's prudent upon us to give solid advice to the administrator on things that affect the community. It's all of our jobs. It's not just the administrator. We give them guidance to make these policy decisions. It's a policy decision to, to not hire adequate fire staff.
Well, it's adequate right now. It's just being paid in overtime instead of being paid in personnel.
To the detriment of the county in paying a million dollars in overtime to the detriment of the employees where it's affecting their mental health and their, their quality of life at home.
Then you're right, you're right, Commissioner. There's not going to be enough, there's not going to be enough, there's not going to be enough money to go around. So I, I think the, I think the throwing out of 12 million a year is, is, is not, is not a good representation of what, what has to happen. But again, I've given my two cents on that, and no one cares to hear it, so...
It's the best representation we have from our experts. It's from our staff experts. It's from the input we've received from other experts as well as our staff, the consultants. So, you know, it's variable. You can, you use the best information you have to make decisions. And we're not, we're, I'm just saying, you know, whether it's six or eight years, it's still going to be a commitment of recurring funds that, that the county doesn't have the luxury of being able to cut and fund continuously for this project. It's, so I think at this point, we need to figure out how to fund the unincorporated, how that looks. Staff will have to go back and look at that. I think that the, these, let's at least decide on, you know, if we're not hiring six library positions, how many, what does that look like between the main library and this library so that we can at least keep the new building staffed?
400,000, 350.
Okay. So do...
One lighter position, one IT, radio, CAD. There's another 100,000. So that's 450,000. That's, that's what it amounts to. Fire rescue, a million, what? I mean, but we're not talking about the stuff that's being in process right now of being built and all the things that are going on around here. There's tons of things going on, remodeling, everything else. Why can't everything stay status quo until we catch up with the beach and then proceed? I don't understand the theory here of just spending it in 100 different places and then saying we have no money for the most needed, important part of our county.
Pam, give me an example, please, of where we're wasting the money.
I didn't say we're wasting it, and they said we're spending the money. Property, the Nexus Center, how much is that?
It's built.
Is it, it's fully paid for and it's furnished? How much is the furniture? How much for the furniture in a building that's not being used yet?
Are you going to stop construction?
Possibly, if that's what's necessary. It doesn't stop it permanently. It stops it for the time until the beach can be renourished. If that's the priority, then have a priority. You can't have 80 priorities and say we don't have any money for them. I mean, that's a budget, it's called budgeting. I'm sorry, everybody who, who, every company has to budget. There's times when you have to save, there's times when you have to cut, and there's times you have to prepare for the future. And it's been nine years since these hurricanes came and this all started, and what has been put into it?
At the time, what we, the Nexus, the Nexus is under contract. The Nexus Center is under contract. Without severe penalties, you're not going to stop that project from being completed. It is, it is a commitment we have made.
Okay, and there are buildings that haven't been started yet.
Okay. Those are one-time costs too. They're not recurring funds. And those are, a lot of those are requests that we've asked the legislator, legislation to help us fund.
And we got no funding for this, this session so far, right?
For what?
We got no, no money this session.
No commitments, it's not done yet.
No, we got no monies from it this session.
We don't know yet.
Oh, okay. I thought when we went for legislative days, they turned down all our...
No, no, no. We've got one in the budget for the, for the ECO Center, for the...
And how much is that?
One and a half million, up to three. They could still make it three, but right now it's one and a half.
Okay. And you're saying we need 12 million every year?
Correct.
Right, so even when you get the beach up to staff, how are you going to keep it going?
The beach?
Yeah. Well, you're saying we need 12 million every year to keep the beach surviving. How is it going to continue for 12 million every year? When you don't have the money now to even fix it? Maybe I don't understand a thing you guys are talking about. Maybe that's it. Maybe I'm just not smart enough for beach nourishment. But I just don't understand how you get to that point. And you don't even have it ready now after nine years. It's been going in a circle from what I see. I haven't seen anything change since I sat in this seat the first day. Nothing has changed. Just talk. I, I really don't know what there is to do. I know that the Hammock Dunes area has secured their, their part of it, and I appreciate that, that's thrilling. What about these other spots? And where is the weakest area? Because I've heard it's in three different places or two different places. And we keep going on and on, and then we talk about a tax, and that's going to save everything. But you don't collect the tax upfront. You're not going to guesstimate how much people are going to pay in tax. And then you're talking about ad valorem? That's, that's done by the county's property appraiser. So that's, that's, I don't necessarily think that's the way we're going to go either. I, I know I'm not a stupid person, but maybe I'm not as well-versed in the beach nourishment. But everything I've heard has been the same thing over and over again. And I just don't see where everybody, like Mr. Long was willing to say, the majority of the people that are at the beach are not people that don't live there. And I know we have tourism, and I like to see the factual numbers. I've heard numbers, I've heard money, I've heard everything else. We have a brand-new beach hotel, right? Does, do we not have impact fees from those things too? Where's the impact fees going? And we're working on all this industrial, commercial stuff. Where's that going?
Depending on the city, the, that would have gone through the city of Flagler Beach, impact fees, because it, the project took place there. But with regard to the beach, I think that there's multiple different projects going on where you have the, I call it emergency projects that are being co-funded with the homeowners association, whether it be Hammock Dunes or the Ocean Hammock or Cinnamon Beach. But those are just temporary Band-Aids to provide them with some protection. And then you have the construction project, which would be another project. And then you have the ongoing nourishment. So it is three different projects of beach. The county has adopted a plan several years ago. The county has worked through a consultant, numerous consultants, to identify how much money is anticipated to be needed. How can we do this? We did a series of surveys, whether it be the consultant or through another third party. There has been consistent support across the entire county for the beach management plan, including funding, not just people on the barrier island. And staff has worked with our board for over two years to come up with a plan based on the guidance and the recommendation of our consultants that the Board of County Commission hired. This isn't my plan. This is a plan that we've put together with the consultant, with the public, with our board. Our board supported it. We've moved forward for the last year and gone out to the community to explain the plan, show them the plan, get more feedback on the plan. It is a lot of money, and it is $12 million a year. But it's a combination of a new half-cent sales tax because we are the only small county in the state of Florida. Legislature back in '92 gave this as a tool to small counties to use because they knew that small counties had a challenge keeping up with the infrastructure. We are the only county who did not enact it back then. We only use half. It is a tool that's out there. It's something that multiple consultants have told us. I also shared over the last week, I think, a report that came out of, I think it was the governor's office, through EDR, about we are a county that relies solely on our ad valorem. We have no tools in the toolbox.
The most dependent county in Florida.
Most dependent on our ad valorem. That's not a good position to be in because the only tool you have is to raise your millage. You have no other tool. You don't have MSBUs, you don't have MSTUs, you don't have any other half-cent sales tax or any other fee tax or otherwise that you can offset the, the millage. Your only tool is the millage. You need to change that makeup. But it's not for Heidi to decide. It's for our board to decide and pick an option that you want so that we can reduce the millage, supplementing it with this other revenue. Call it a tax by another name, call it whatever you want. We have a funding strategy for the beach, for the beach construction and for the beach maintenance. It may not be to the liking of our board now, but this is something that we've worked on as staff and as our board and the public to come up with it over the last two years with the help of a consultant. Again, this isn't something I made up, so it's not my personal thing. It's, you know, a combination of things that we've looked at, whether it's a new half cent, whether it's the tourism kicking in money, whether it is a dedicated millage, whether it is the MSBU. It's all of those together that make up the 12 million. That's how you fund it, so that it's not all solely relying on the half cent. That is a large portion, but it's not all of it. So when you look at the $72 million gap, 56 million does come from the half cent. It is a large portion. But it is working with the cities to contribute a portion of theirs. And talking to their staff, they seemed that they, there was people in the cities that supported it, and they wanted to know where we were at with the interlocal and when did we think we were going to come back and present to them? Because they're looking at it as this is an opportunity for them to get the other half, and they can use it for their needs, whether it be roads, potholes, stormwater, issues, challenges that they face. It's a tool that is awarded to the county, that the county has to levy, but it helps everybody in our community. We have challenges ourself. I went over this during the one-on-ones. When you look at our current debt service, we pay over just under $10 million a year in debt service. Well, our buying power is probably somewhere around 14 or 15 million. So when you start thinking of wanting to build an animal shelter or wanting to think about doing the sports complex or wanting to do a lot of these other things, you're going to be limited until probably 2033, 2035, until this complex and the sheriff's office building start falling off of your debt service. Because you don't have a lot of capacity. You cannot use, unless you go out for a referendum, you cannot pledge your ad valorem tax dollars. What we're pledging for debt service is non-ad valorem, which is already spoken for. That's why you need to create more tools in the toolbox that give you more capacity to take on debt for some of these projects that you're looking at in the near future. So you might not like the plan that we currently have, but it's the plan that we've developed over the last several years. It will work. It's just whether or not there's direction from the board to move forward or are we scrapping it and going back and looking at something completely different? I just need to know how to build a budget. At the end of the day, I don't care one way or another. Whatever the board wishes to do, we will implement it on behalf of the board. I don't have an agenda, I don't have a preference. But I would like to know some direction so that we can build a budget and present it to you. I don't have the authority to cut programs. These are policy decisions of the board. If there are programs you don't want to do or long-term things that you have funded, I can't arbitrarily cut them and then have a resident come to you and say, "Well, why did you cut this program? Did I have the authority to do that?" No, I did not. That takes the board. And that's why I need direction from you as a board to tell me what it is you support or don't support.
Can I get consensus to waive the comprehensive plan discussion for today? It's almost 4:30, pushing...
I thought there was a deadline.
Because I'm about drained.
I know. I thought there was a deadline on this, but yeah, I'm fine. We can wait till the second, or the first, second.
Fire rescue, who wants to fund the decision unit? I need consensus to give the administrator consensus on the fire rescue positions or propose an alternative. So do we have consensus on the fire rescue positions? Anybody in support with me on this?
Yes, I am.
Okay, you have consensus. You'll have to explain the IT CAD position's importance a little bit more as the, as, since this is one of your remaining... since this is one of your remaining decision units you've brought to us.
So the IT radio CAD position, only 40% of that is funded by the general funds. You've got about $38,000. It's a $38,000 impact to the general fund. This is a position that works hand-in-hand with police and fire on the radio system and your CAD, which is your computer-aided dispatch. It's a position that they need an additional person. When you look at the needs and you're adding more fire and more police, not just on the county side, but also in Bonnell, or in Palm Coast, or in Flagler Beach, this is a person that works to support the backend of that tool for them. They actually asked for three of these positions. I told them, "We'll see if we can fund one," only because it's 40% funded out of the general fund. The remaining is E911 and the radio, which is the radio fund is what the cities, the user groups pay into. So essentially, they're helping pay for it.
I don't see chiefs, so there's nobody...I don't know nobody from fire or from the sheriff's office here, but...
They both support it, obviously, or it wouldn't have been in consideration.
Okay. Mr. Hanson?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm just going through the list. On library, how do we want to handle the library staffing? That seems to be the most creative here.
I think when the new one opens, we limit the hours. We take four positions, two from Palm Coast, two from the existing. Is this six in addition to the two that Bonnell already has? Does that make eight staff?
It would be...they asked for six, and it would be in addition to the other two, so it would be a total of eight. You do have some requirements. You did accept several grants for the library, so you are going to have some requirements for hours of operation and levels of service. So depending on what you decide, if it's not the six, I'm going to have to come back and let you know what the ramifications are for what your decision was.
I would say come back with us for those grant requirements, what they...and how the positions back that up, bring that back to us.
Okay.
If that's okay with everybody? And what the hours of operation requirements are and... And for this budget year, we're...I need everybody's input on this. Is the unincorporated plan, for this budget, we will need to know what your plan is to fund the unincorporated beach plan?
The ramifications of doing that are just terrible.
It's something that we look at every year. Why does it mean that nothing else will ever get funded? Reach two is already funded. Reach three gets an $8.8 million.
Reach two funding goes away if we do the Northern 10 miles. Reach two funding gets swept up to fund the Northern 10 miles.
Why?
We have construction money already.
We have construction money.
We have construction, but the maintenance money is swept up.
Okay, well, let's take one year at a time. But I see what you're saying, but if the beach, Reach three is getting $8.8 million this year, might not last a year or two, might not be ready. There's no permits for Reach three yet. There's no permits for Reach four. They're not going to permit us until we come up with a funding plan. So, again, I have a whole different opinion on this construction. I think we're over...I'm not a consultant. I mean, for Pete's sakes, I would never in my life would I be a consultant. But I think...I would like to see what some of our new consulting firm has to say about some of this. Reach four will never be a dredge project. Reach four is rock. It's in marine land. Why are we...why can't we take this one look at a time? I'm not saying we don't need...well, I'm saying we don't need 12 million in maintenance every year, but isn't it better to have 5 million as opposed to 0 million? Can't we fund as much as we can without having to say we're going to fund 12 million a year? And we've got to start somewhere. We got to. And again, reach out to Flagler Beach. I'll reach out to Flagler Beach. They should consider doing an MSBU. They need to put some skin in this game. And as far as I know, there's not even a piece of equipment out there to do maintenance on that beach. So they're waiting on us. I can tell you that. I know they're waiting on us.
I think the difference...I'll sum it up with just the difference in philosophy. And the difference in philosophy is treating it as an entire unit, is comprehensively dealing with 18 miles of beach versus annually nitpicking it and finding places to spend money. It's entirely...philosophically, it's a different approach. All right. Do you have enough information from us budget-wise?
I'm not on the beach. I have yes to fire rescue, yes to radio CAD, bring back library with hours of operation, grant requirements. Commissioner Carney was going to reach out to Flagler Beach about the MSBU. But when it comes to the beach, is it just the unincorporated that we're working on then?
Yes.
Okay, I must have missed that.
Since we have now down to either unincorporated or do nothing, I don't think anybody here supports a do-nothing. So that means we're, by deduction, we are doing the unincorporated plan.
Just to confirm, that's the most critical part right now, right?
Not really. I mean, we shift the construction from...Reach two now is not the same plan any longer. Reach two, now that construction funding is shifted to the unincorporated. Reach two is part of Flagler Beach.
And Beverly Beach.
And Beverly Beach.
And Horn Park.
So it gets shifted to the unincorporated parts.
So there will be a section of like FDOT money, funding that's coming that will go in Northern Flagler Beach, but it will not be building back to the same capacity as originally designed. That's why when I said if we're going to the Northern 10, or Option 2, it's going to require an update of construction plans, because we will be modifying Northern Flagler Beach and Beverly Beach to just give them the necessary amount. It will end up moving about 5 million out of that funding and shifting it into the unincorporated and...
So when did this conversation happen?
When we went over the items here today, and I'm telling you the ramifications of each one of these. If we're not going to...and I believe the chair even hit on it, that if we're not...if we don't have a maintenance plan in place, then why would you put millions of dollars into an area?
Because we can do maintenance. We can start a maintenance plan next year with a half-cent sales tax that the citizens vote in. Why is this all or nothing? Why is this...why do we keep moving this money around on this spreadsheet?
The funding that's available is not necessarily earmarked for Reach two. The only reason why it's going to Reach two is because natural progression. You started Reach one. You'll go to Reach two. If you don't have maintenance in the city of Flagler Beach or in the town of Beverly Beach, it doesn't make good practical sense to put all the money there when you still have a gap, a hole, in your unincorporated area. Therefore, you're going to reallocate the funding, because it is...it can be used anywhere on the beach. There's nothing saying it has to go to Flagler Beach. And if you are responsible for the unincorporated, I would suggest you move a portion of it there to fill that gap.
And you're assuming a referendum gets passed? And we can't...even the commission can't agree that that sales tax should be increased, so it's not a slam dunk. I mean, Commissioner Richardson has said she does not support a tax increase. So that's the same, whether it's voted in or if it's a referendum. I'm assuming you would not support a referendum, because that's a tax increase. But philosophically, your position should be the same.
No, don't tell me what my philosophies are, please.
I'm just trying to make sense of...make sure that we're...
If the residents of Flagler County feel that they want to spend a half a cent more on every cost that it would affect, that's their decision, not one person or two people's decision on costing more money for other people to survive. I just can't accept that. I don't know why you can't accept that. I can't accept it, except the fact that it was fair for everyone. That's all.
Right. I guess the point I'm just trying to make is that we can't assume a referendum is going to pass.
Nor can we assume that it won't pass. So we don't have a guarantee on anything. We don't even have a guarantee on the money. So the referendum or not, at least you're giving it a chance. It's not even got a chance right now, in my opinion. So it's an opportunity, taking the opportunities when they come, instead of just, you know, either with all or nothing at all. It's just not going to work.
So we are in agreement that Ainsley stood up here at the last meeting and stated that the dredge for Reach two and the southern part of Flagler Beach State A1A could be done together, but it would not happen until 2026, where they wouldn't be getting bids or quotes until 2026, because of the availability of dredges. So it might be smarter to do it all in 2026.
So trying to remember what she said, it's two different things.
Come on up, Ainsley, please.
Can we have your professional opinion, please? Because we need clarity here.
I've kind of been sitting there waiting to come up. Here are a couple of things I want to respond to, but I will answer this question, sure. Ainsley Renkey, Coastal Engineering Administrator. And I believe the question was about the timing of the two periods of performance. So when we put this out to bid in about six weeks, the plan is to have two periods of performance, one for 2025 and one for 2026, because of the feedback that we have gotten from a majority of the dredging companies saying they don't have availability this year. They said that if they were to come and do it this year and try to fit it in their schedule, prices would be approximately 30% higher. So that's why we want to look at 2026. We want to stay within our reasonable budget that we have for this project, which is around $35 million right now, if we don't scale it back. So we have to put it out to bid. We have to see what we get back. I do know that one company is going to have a new dredge call online soon, so we may get lucky. And when that new dredge is available, maybe it can come here. We don't know until we put it out to bid. So however, if we wanted to add the southern section, which is down by Gamble Rogers State Park, I have spoken with BoM, the Bureau of Ocean and Energy Management, about adding that section. And they said that we would be able to go through more regulatory action and activity if we wanted to add that, but it would take time. So that is why it's an option for one of the periods of performance and not both. Does that make sense? So if we do it in 2026, we would have time to go back to BoM. We'd have time to renegotiate our lease with BoM to add that section if we wanted to. We also may have to modify our permit with the Army Corps. So in summary, all of that takes time. If we build the project as it's designed in May 2026, we could go through the regulatory activities to add the southern section.
Which would give us time to work with the Army Corps and not lose their opportunity, correct?
I'm talking about the Army Corps Regulatory, which oversees the permit for us.
Okay.
Yeah.
The southern part is within the city of Flagler Beach?
It is, yes.
Begs the question again, with us just pivoting and doing an unincorporated plan, does that not change our construction plan for Reach two?
It absolutely does. So if you are only going to focus on the unincorporated area, you're going to have severe ramifications for Beverly Beach, which right now in the construction plans, they're getting about 80 cubic yards per foot of fill, which is similar to the Army Corps Beach Nourishment Project. And that would be reduced to possibly nothing.
We are going to be...the unincorporated plan includes the MSBU, which is directly tied to residents in the unincorporated. So again, philosophically, the construction should be in front of unincorporated areas where we are charging the MSBU for the maintenance and the long-term stabilization. It should not...once we've made this pivot, those construction funds should not be going to places that are not part of the unincorporated plan, because we can't...we're not getting MSBU money from other cities at this point.
Right. And if you can't maintain it, you know, there's that argument. If you can't maintain it, why are you going to build it there? So, I mean, you could put some sand there if you want to, and I would go with your direction at that point. But how long will it last?
We're getting ready to give them six cubic yards.
We are.
We are, yeah.
And one thing that I did want to mention, because Commissioner Richardson had brought it up, you know, what have we done in the past nine years, since 2016, when Matthew hit? One thing we've done was a Band-Aid...I call them Band-Aid projects, emergency projects. They came in a couple of years after Matthew hit, and they put six cubic yards of sand to form the dune from the northern part of the county, basically all the unincorporated area. That is an emergency berm. That's what FEMA calls an emergency berm. That is not a project, right? So we're not being proactive. That's just to stop the ocean from damaging the infrastructure even more. Then nothing happened after that. So we had Hurricane Irma, then we had Hurricane Dorian, then we had Ian, then we had Nicole. After all of those storms, we did another six cubic yards per foot. It cost $20 million to do that in 11 miles, six cubic yards. It's $20 million. FDEP has given us $50 million since I came here two and a half years ago to restore our coastline. The FDOT has given us $15 million. Army Corps of Engineers has given us, you know...you see the point I'm getting at. The federal government has given us $50 million. Our state has given us $50 million. They see this coastline as an important asset to the state. And so if we don't follow through and come to the table with something, some dedication to the beaches in our community, they will not be granting us any more money. That is my professional opinion. Just wanted to make that point.
I've heard that. I mean, that's not...it can be your opinion, but it's fact.
I have been told that.
They're not going to give us any more money. That's it. They're done.
And over those years, what did we do for our part? That's the question.
No, I know.
We're still doing it, so from what I understand.
Flagler County has not really funded much of this at all. It's all been, you know, non-match money.
Right. So it's what we've gotten. And the TDC...Amy's reminding me, and the TDC. Thank you, Amy.
And the TDC funds.
And I'm not complaining. I'm just saying, this has been going on. And I'm sitting here in six months, and they want me to do things that I don't feel comfortable doing just because nobody did anything. And that's not acceptable to me, that everybody has to be punished because nobody did anything that was in this facility at that time and over those years. And that's where my stress comes from, is that it's not a magic button. "Okay, everybody, pay up now, because we need it." We needed it nine, 10 years ago, and why didn't they...like, one of the ladies had left here, but she suggested us building up, you know, a pile of money year after year for the protection. protection.
Yeah.
And now we want everything to magically happen.
That's what we want to do, so with the reoccurring money, 12 million, that's basically setting aside 12 million every year so that when we need to go build that project, we can do it, which is what a lot of other counties are able to do. But other counties might have, you know, more TDC, you know?
Yeah.
And so we have to figure out our unique solution, but others...
81% of their beach in St. Augustine is from TDC, 81%.
Yeah, so different counties have different makeup, right, of the funding that they can use, but there are other small counties in Florida that have figured this out.
I'm sure.
And I have full faith that we can do this.
I'm not questioning it, I'm just reiterating it because that's all I know, and it's disappointing to think that I have to come up with magic in six months and three months, over and over and over again, in the same story, without getting new input into new ideas of how we can make this happen easier, better, and less affordable towards everybody's budget. That's all I'm trying to do.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have asked to get access to the ATV so I can take you out.
Good, I can't wait for my buggy ride.
Yeah.
Thank you for that, I appreciate you, I know your expertise is great, you know we've had the conversation. Unfortunately, I've been sick for 17 days.
Right, and the last time I talked to you, you said you were sick.
And I'm on the edge, so by next week, we're going for a ride, so thank you for that, I appreciate that.
Sure, you're welcome.
All right, if it's okay, I'll go out to public comment one final time, since we're, I think we're done with this one. I will ask Ms. Petito, though, do you have enough from us at this point?
I believe so, we'll come back with some options of how do we fund the Northern 10.
Okay, thank you. Open up for public comment, thank you.
Wendy Tramarchi, Flagler, unincorporated. I'm gonna take a few seconds of my time to talk about this. When we moved down here last year, we had just sold an oceanfront home in Indian River County, in the unincorporated area. They chose to, between two beaches, between two county beaches, they chose to just nourish that beach. Within a week, it was gone, because the water comes up, it hit our seawall, and took theirs beach right out. If you're gonna do it, my suggestion, after living in a house for 30 years on the ocean, do the whole 18 miles. It doesn't make sense to do anything else, because it will, you will have a take in the areas that aren't done correctly. That's my two cents. Okay, my other two cents. The Flagler County Shelter was without air conditioning for well over a month in the kennels, and seems to be a reoccurring issue. This is not acceptable ever in the Florida heat. I can understand where sports complexes, skateboard parks, swimming pools are front and center issues, but we all have a responsibility to overwhelming amount of unwanted and abandoned animals, that we make sure their health and welfare are also a priority in Flagler County. We need to start getting the problem under control, we need to make this right. We all see the current board of the shelter is not able to handle the responsibilities of the shelter, and I'm sure you haven't gotten an independent audit yet either. There must be retired management, and I saw a bunch of them here today, that will be willing to try and get on that board, to make a difference, to keep that shelter viable. Management executives, pillars of this community, you can't tell me there's not some who would be willing to go into that shelter to correct it. The main things right now that you can do, I know it's hard with everything going on, animal control should go to the city, let the city take care of that with you. There's government control and oversight can't be done by an entity that is privately owned. It just can't, that has to go under the county, preferably the Sheriff's Department, but at least the county. And licensing, the city and the county need to do the same, there need to be animal licensing, at least make people partly aware of what's going on and what they need to do with their animal. You should be in lockstep with the city with that. Allocating monies for the shelter, yes, I know, there's no money, but every year, there has to be some way. $500,000 would cost for everything you need to take in 32 animals off the street and not be euthanized, that's how much it would cost. We've given you all that information, and we have a whole group that is willing to help you with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Steve Davis, Painters Hill. I see three alternatives from the discussion. One is to do the 18 miles with a half-cent sales tax. Second is to do the 18 miles with an increase in ad valorem taxes. Third is to focus on the northern 10 miles, unincorporated areas, with MSBU, MSTU, and funding from a variety of sources. But those three alternatives, is what I hear you all discussing, you gotta do one of them, you can't do nothing. If you wind up with the half-cent sales tax, and you push it out for a referendum, and the referendum fails, then you're forced to back, if you're doing the 18 miles, you're forced back to increasing ad valorem taxes to accomplish it. Please do something.
My name's Jody Ballinger, I live in the Hammock. I think right now I'm really kind of confused, because from the discussion, I thought it was like, no new taxes, so we were down to option two, with the 10 miles unincorporated. And I'm just trying to understand, because I know when I go back home tonight, I'm gonna have friends and neighbors who are gonna ask me what the decision was, and I'm gonna say, "I really don't know. They talked about, I thought, option two, which goes back to part of the half-cent sales tax, but we don't know how much that would be, and then it would just be the MSBU."
That's the discussion on the existing, we have an existing half-cent.
Okay.
So the part two, Plan 2, the unincorporated, uses more of that.
Okay, so at this point, we really don't know exactly how much that would be, so we don't know that those of the folks who live in unincorporated...
We don't know what the...
We don't know what the amount would be for the MSBU.
Right, right.
Okay, so we heard it could be anywhere from 300 to 2,000, but how do you determine that, because it depends on how much of a benefit you get, correct?
Go back to the discussions we had last fall, back in August and September, when we did the town halls in the Hammock, it'll reflect that discussion more, we'll go back to that discussion.
So the discussion of...
Jody, it'll be a two-part, it'll be an MSBU flat rate, it'll probably be around $300, and then there's an MSTU, and that tax will be based on the value of the land.
But we haven't established an MSTU at this time.
We have one, we have the capability of doing it, we have not done it yet.
But it would have to be like voted on and come before the commission, before it could be enacted, is that correct?
No, we have permission to do it now.
Okay. Okay, thank you, appreciate the time.
Any other public comment?
I'm gonna change the momentum of this thing. I cannot, I cannot single out a 10-mile program, knowing that is the absolute wrong decision. It is an 18-mile project or nothing. So I am going to switch, and this half-cent sales tax is the only way that, and I want everybody to understand, this is mostly for Flagler Beach and Beverly Beach. If you're telling me that you're gonna take that project that we have been staring at for a year on Reach 2, and because we don't have the money, which we do, but we can't prove it, and the only way we're gonna get this done is by agreeing to a half-cent sales tax, because they're refusing to give us any other figures, then I can't let that happen. I can't let an 18-mile project be destroyed over $4 million, that I know we can find, and I know we have, but they're gonna beat us to a pulp, Pam, until we get this thing funded. I'm just saying, it's the wrong decision. It is the wrong decision. I had no clue that they were gonna pull Reach 2 out of the plan. Another reason why I don't get these slides until, you know, two days before the meeting, so I don't have time to ask questions, I don't have time to think about it, I gotta get up here and just keep the same philosophy going. Philosophically, I don't agree with it. However, if that's the position the county is going to make in order to fund something, we're still not meeting the requirements of the entire coastline. So, that's what I have to say.
And I will say, in responses, the reason we've kept these discussions open is because this is such a big project and very complex with layers upon layers, that it made no sense to just stop discussion until the point where Heidi needed to finish the budget, so it is, there's so much involved in it, that I appreciate the fact that this is a continuing discussion. I don't know where that puts us, because we're still shy, I guess we need Ms. Pennington back to complete the discussion.
I don't think a vote is ready today anyway, because we're not voting on it.
No, 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 yes.
And she's supposed to come back next week, I understand, right? You said Monday? So, that gives us all time to digest and swallow what we heard today, and to...
Yeah, Pam, I'd like you, you know, you say no new taxes, but you're willing to tax the members of the, the people that live on the Outer Banks, raise their taxes by $2,000.
I never said that.
That the MSBU is gonna do that.
Did I say it had to be that way? I've never said that. So it's, I did not, I did not add to it. I asked for us to remove our expenses here for it. I never said more taxes. So please don't misquote me, Commissioner, I have never said that. Those words have never come out of my mouth. I asked what it was, I never said that we needed more, so that is not correct. So please make sure you are fair with what you're saying.
I will say, though, ultimately, this will be an agended item, so, okay. So, do you want the ILA to go to the city? Does that, or do you just want to get to a vote?
What will the ILA of the city accept ad tax, right?
No, it's just an agreement on how the, how the...
How their portion will be what she pays, right, towards that.
It's just, it gives them their opportunity to have input.
Because we sent the airport into local to them, and it's come back twice, so I think we need to be where we need to be before we start into localing.
I mean, the only, the only counter to that is if we get them to commit to it, it puts, it takes the pressure off, they've seen it, they've committed to agreeing to it, because they would hold more power if we make the vote without having that discussion with them. Then they have the leverage, excuse me. No, they haven't had, they haven't seen the ILA.
Then Heidi go and discuss that with them?
No, they haven't seen the ILA yet. They have not taken...
They haven't seen the wording of the ILA.
Correct.
But they've had the discussion.
Prelimarily, yes.
So you have an answer?
No, it's not an answer, the ILA is the...
Right, they want to review it and see, and read through it, which is understandable.
Right.
So do we.
Right.
Okay.
So I just want to make sure which way you think we need to go with that, because I think they should see it before we vote.
Well, the ILA gives Palm Coast everything they ask for. We gave them, they said, "We'll do this if you give us the same number each year," it's not a percentage, so that's in there, we did that.
We have negotiated to a degree with them already to gain, but it is that, it is that physical consensus vote in a workshop from them that gives us...
You know what, Andy, I'll say this to you, if I was given more than five seconds to look at it, I might consider it, but I'm not, I haven't had time to even look at it. I don't know what they're negotiating, I don't know anything. I got it at 1:00 when I sat down here. It's not fair to me for you to, not you, but for this board, to be rushing into any decisions when I have not had time to review it. So I have to stay with no, only because I don't know what it says, so why would I pass it on to Palm Coast without me seeing it? Why didn't I get it last week? You know, I don't, I don't know, I'm so frustrated.
We'll, I'll bring it up under my comments at the end of Monday's meeting, and we'll have a discussion then. Okay, thank you. So we've agreed to postpone Comprehensive Plan, thank you, Adam. We've had public comment, is there a motion to adjourn?
Move we adjourn.
Thank you.
Gosh, I was all ready for the Comprehensive Plan, I got lots of notes.
Oh, good. It's time, though.